Hi Heather, I found it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. So you opened that one? Well, she'll teach the new, so she has that one. What we do is-
I think she switched her class to asynchronous though.
Hello, hello?
I did it. Oh, we're on YouTube? Hi Heather. Is she frozen?
Is that Paula?
No, I see Heather. It looked like Heather is frozen and Lauren is frozen, but I can see Sonya. Oh, okay Lauren, I see you now. Sonya, you're moving, but it looked like Heather is frozen. Oh, they're mute, no wonder.
Alright, I call this meeting to order at 5:10. Ms. Paula, roll call. Ms. Paula, are you on the line?
Hello?
Hello?
We hear you now. Can you roll call please?
Trustee Calhoun?
Present.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Present.
Trustee Ramos?
Present.
Dr. Little?
Present.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Lee? Trustee Lopez?
Present.
Thank you.
Moving on to Pledge of Allegiance, can we have Trustee Little lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Everyone's hand over their heart. Ready? Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc. Begin.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Some day.
Alright, moving on to item six, Report of Actions Taken in Closed Session Pursued to Government Code Section 54857.1. We do have something to report. In closed session, the Board took action to approve a settlement agreement among the district, the Compton Community College Federation of Employees and an academic employee resolving agreements. The roll call vote was as followed, 5-0. Moving on to item number seven, Open Session Agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So it's been moved by Dr. LeBlanc and seconded by Trustee Calhoun. Do we have any discussion on the item? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Paula, can you call the vote?
Trustee Calhoun?
Aye.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Aye.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Alright, moving forward to section number eight, Recognitions. We have two recognitions tonight. Dr. Curry, can you take over on this section for us?
Okay, so the first recognition that we have tonight is recognizing the faculty member, we're recognizing Professor Jerome Evans for his work as the as the faculty representative to the Board since 2006. His last Board meeting, this will actually be his last Board meeting. He is retiring on June 12th, 2020. So we actually have a plaque for him that he would receive in the mail, but I wanted to make sure that the Board have opportunity to recognize him for serving on the, serving as a faculty representative to the Board for over 14 years.
He's not on, huh? Is he on?
Pardon? I'm here.
Oh, you are?
So we want to, we want to allow you to say a couple of words. If we were before the diocese, you would be presented a lovely plaque, but we'll give you those for at the moment.
I'd just like to say that I really am very pleased with the fact that thought enough of me to keep me in this position so long. I've had a wonderful experience with my administrative staff and friends, and I certainly hope that I was able to bring some enlightenment and some knowledge to my students, most of all. So my tenure for some 21 years, extremely positive, and I'd like to thank you very much for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I'm going to allow the trustees to say a couple of words in their gratitude, and we'll start off with Dr. Little.
We just want to thank you so much for your years of service, and as you indicated, your commitment to student learning and their engagement. And I'm sure that you leave a legacy of thought leaders and community members who have been profoundly impacted. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Trustee Ramos?
I just wanted to say thank you, Professor. You've put in so much time in assisting our students and the district and this entire community. You've been very active on campus with multiple committees. You've played a huge role in the Compton College community. Thank you so much.
And thank you.
Trustee Calhoun?
Hi. You know I'm gonna miss you. I know I knew you prior, but I've only been able to serve for two years of your 14 years. So I'm thankful that I got a chance to actually work with you in person. And I'm gonna miss you, but you sure you don't want to stay?
It's good, but they say you need to quit when that time feels right, and it kind of feels right right now. But thanks so much for that. That's very kind of you.
Yeah, that's no problem. You know, we got friends in common, so I'm gonna have to call my friends to tell you to check up on you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Professor Evans, I just want to thank you for your service, but the quality of your service and for the leadership that you provided over the years. And the sense of joy and liveliness that you brought to your presentations will certainly be missed. And also your professionalism. You have just been a joy to work with, and you will leave a void. You can't be replaced. Somebody else may come, but there will never be another Jerome Evans. And it's just been great. I'm glad that I had that opportunity of working with such a caliber of person.
I'd like to thank all the trustees. Thank you for those kind words. I really, really appreciate it, because I've enjoyed my tenure immensely at Compton Community College District. Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
And I hope you train the next person well to come before us and have us be prepared for those requesting a money for your upcoming book fairs.
Oh shoot.
They keep on me about that. Yeah, well, I try. Thanks.
Trustee Calhoun?
Where's Dr. Curry? Is he gonna say anything? That's who's gonna really miss Professor. That's who's really gonna miss Professor. Come on now.
He needs that banter.
Yeah.
Dr. Hurry has one more presentation. I'm sure he's saving his words for everyone.
Okay.
Moving right along.
I don't know where he's at, though.
Missing in action. Okay, move it on.
Dr. Curry?
Frozen in time.
I think he's having problems with his internet, remember?
I think so.
There were some major problems in Compton area yesterday, and I think it's still part of the city. He's not in Compton.
He's connecting right now.
Okay.
I don't think he's in Compton, because I would have went to the office, but I don't think he's there.
Well, I was just-
Board members, while we have our- Dr. Curry? Yes, you missed our words to Professor Evans. So we were giving you the stage to say a couple of words and also to do the second presentation.
Alright, yes, thank you. I did hear the words for Professor Evans, but I do want to say, Professor Evans, thank you very much for your service to Compton Community College District, especially your work outside of being the faculty representative to the Board, your work working with the Latino Heritage Month, and also the African-American Black History Month activities and your Brown envelope. And always willing to serve on the community, what we're asked to do, and also serve on Men of Color. So I do want to say thank you for your work, and we appreciate you. I know you'll be back in six months teaching part-time, but I want to say thank you very much for your work and services to the district.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
So the next recognition is for the student trustee Willie Lee. He has served as student trustee for 2019, 20, 20 year. I don't know if he's on the line yet, but we want to recognize him for his service. This will be his last meeting as a student trustee.
I don't see his name on here.
Have they had the elections yet, Dr. Curry, for the next student trustee?
Yeah, the elections are scheduled for the last week of May.
Okay.
Okay, I don't see him, Dr. Curry, unless he's on the phone. I don't recognize the number.
No, he has an account, so I don't know which, I don't see him either. We'll reach out to him. We'll reach out, ask him an email right now to see where he's at.
Okay, so we are going to move on to item number nine, Request to Address the Board of Trustees Agenda on Agenda and Non-Agenda Matters. Ms. Paula, do we have any requests to address the Board?
No, I have not received any requests.
Alright. Board of Trustees, do we, given we have no matters to address the Board of Agenda, I'm going to skip 9.02 and move on to item number 10, Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes. 10.01 Meetings of the April 21st, 2020 Board of Trustees Special Board Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. LeBlanc and seconded by Trustee Ramos. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, wait, give me a second. I'm looking for people. I don't see any discussion. Seeing no discussion, Ms. Paula, can you call the vote?
Okay, I don't think that was a special meeting.
It was just a regular board meeting?
Yeah.
So we would need to update that, actually. Thank you for that correction.
Trustee Calhoun?
Aye.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Aye.
Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 11, Reports from Representative and Employee Organizations. We will start off with Academic Senate Report.
Hi, I'm here. It's Amber Gillis. Hi, it's nice to see everyone. Unfortunately, it's on Zoom, and I have to apologize. I know I told Dr. Curry that I have been, I have not been present, and that Jerome has been in my place since last semester. I've begun working on my doctoral degree in educational leadership, and unfortunately, my classes are on Tuesday evenings. So usually, I was at Kelsey Fullerton during this time, so it's nice to be able to be on Zoom, so I can be in two places at once. I just, you know, so thank you for your time. I just wanted to, you know, know if official report, you know, there's a lot of things that are going on. The next time we meet, I'll have our annual year-end report available for everyone. But I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to highlight a couple of things that are ongoing on our campus and things that the Academic Senate is working on and is supportive. I won't say concerned, but just that we understand the urgency and that we are working diligently before the end of the academic year to see that some things are in place. And one of those is making sure that our curriculum, particularly related to distance education, is accurate and is reported accurately within our curriculum, our curriculum system. We have our curriculum chair, Sean Moore, who has been working around the clock with faculty members. He hosts open lab via Zoom about every other Tuesday to assist faculty in making sure that deadlines are met and that we can continue to offer quality services and programs to our students. That is our utmost importance in Academic Senate. And so we really appreciate the leadership that he has been exhibiting to our faculty on campus. I also want to take a minute to also acknowledge Jerome. I know I didn't say anything before, but I have been, I'm just finishing my 10th year at Compton College. I started in 2009 as an adjunct, right fresh out of graduate school, and Jerome Evans was my first friend. So I met him in the hallway, and he asked, you know, if I looked a little lost, and I said, yeah, that's pretty normal. And he just said that he knew that we would be best friends. And, you know, like so many people have already said, I want to echo that, you know, his leadership and his support and, you know, has just been extraordinary. I appreciate and respect his friendship. And even though we all know how much he does on campus, I don't know if everyone here just knows just how loved he is by our students. And so I think it's one thing to be a good employee, but it's another to be able to demonstrate, you know, the quality of teaching and the relationships that he's built with students over the years. Students come back and visit him all the time, and students that are in my class, you know, they'll say that some of the most transformative professors that have Jerome Evans is always the top of the list. So I don't know if he's still online. I just wanted to take a moment to also acknowledge him. That is a big void for our Senate. We will miss him dearly. It's a big void for our campus and our community, and we love him dearly, so we just want him to know that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. You're welcome. You know, and we're also working on things related to accreditation, so that is also on our plate. We have also, in the last academic year, have, you know, helped either revise or put forward 28 Board Policies and Administrative Regulations. So I know Dr. Curry has a number of those to give for you to review, but those are things that the Senate takes very seriously, and we've been working very hard to make sure that those are in place. So I'm going to go ahead and stop my report there, but the next time we meet, I'll have something written for you. We were able to start drafting a budget this year and really start to formalize a lot of our processes. It's also my last two meetings as Academic Senate President. So at the next meeting, I'll go ahead and introduce Dr. Minadora Molinavie, who will be coming in and taking my place. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And moving on to item 11.02, CCCFE Certified Employees Report. Do we have any representative?
She asked me to speak on her behalf and say that the union did not have a formal meeting, a formal presentation at this time. But she will be at our next meeting with more information about the union issues and duties and activities.
Alright, thank you very much. And then do we have a Mainqua on the call?
Yeah, I meant, he said yesterday he has no report.
Got it. And from our Associated Student Body, I didn't see Nathan, but is he on? I don't see Nathan on, so we will move on to item number 12, which is our presentations. Our very first presentation, we have our upward bound- Our very first presentation, we have our upward bound math, science.
All right, so I, I will introduce, uh, we have today, uh, today we have LaShawn Simples. Uh, who is providing our presentation for the upper bound math science. LaShawn Simples Barnes, sorry, who is our program manager for upper bound math science. She will be providing the presentation and update on upper bound math science. Normally, provide a presentation, we also recognize the graduating senior, graduating seniors, but due to COVID nineteen, we're providing a presentation on Zoom.
Will I be able to?
Just say next slide and we can be able to move the slides for you.
Perfect, all right. Thank you, Dr. Curry, for the introduction. Also joining me tonight is our amazing program specialist. Amanda Renteria and three of our U B M S seniors, Cassandra Cabrera. Gerardo Gigi Gonzalez, and last but definitely not least, Jasmine Delgado. Next slide, please. So here's a brief overview, um, our table of contents. What is Trio? What is the U B M S program? Um, U B M S at Compton College and what that looks like. The high need of, for services and the role of U B M S. Next slide, please. We will also, um, talk about what is Trio, so let's delve right into it. Trio programs were developed in nineteen sixty-five during President Lyndon B. Johnson's War on Poverty. All trio programs were designed to motivate and support students, um, from disadvantaged backgrounds. Supplementing their existing education and preparing them for academic success. Uh, there's several trio programs, including upper bound math and science, as you see in the list. Next slide, please. So what is the U B M S program? The goal of our program is to increase the rate at which participants complete secondary education. And enroll in graduate institutions of post-secondary education. With degrees with, of science, technology, engineering and math. We help our students graduate from high school and roll in college, and then also graduate from college with STEM degrees. And there is a high need for services, so let's discuss that. Here are the city of Compton's demographics. Our racial ethnic makeup is thirty-three percent African American. Sixty-five percent Latino or Latinx, and four percent other. Eighty percent of families meet the US Department of Ed. Low-income guidelines. And in Compton, only seven percent of residents have earned a BA or BS degree. Now I want to talk a little bit about our partner school demographics. We have two partner schools, Compton High School and Dominguez High School. At Compton, oh, we can go back, please. Thank you. At Compton, there is nineteen percent African American. Latinx makes up seventy-nine percent, and there's two percent other. At Dominguez, eleven percent African American, eighty percent, or excuse me, eighty-six percent Latino and three percent other. At both schools, there's over eighty percent need for free or reduced lunch. Next slide, please. Also, we have our partner schools graduation and college enrollment rates. At Compton High, there's eighty-nine percent graduation, which is up significantly in the last couple of years. And fifty percent college enrollment, forty-three percent four-year college enrollment. At Dominguez, it's ninety-two percent graduate rate, forty-seven percent of two-year college enrollment. And fifty-two percent for the four-year college enrollment. But there's still need for services. Let's break down the chart. So at Compton High School, out of eighty-nine percent of the graduating class, those three hundred and fifty-five students. Only three hundred and sixteen percent of the seniors graduated. And then also, of those three hundred and sixteen students, only a hundred and sixty-three, or forty-six percent. Actually went on to commit to UC or CSU. At Dominguez, four hundred and twelve seniors. Were there last year, but only three hundred and seventy-nine graduated, or ninety-two percent. And only a hundred and ninety-four actually were able to commit to a four-year university. So forty-seven percent. The student-to-counselor ratio also is dismal. It's about six hundred students to one counselor at both schools. And that far exceeds the ideal ratio of a hundred to one. Next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about our UC and CSU admission and what that is. Freshman eligibility requirements require rigorous fifteen-course curriculum, also known as A T U G. And to take college entrance exams, SAT or ACT. Most of our students take the A C, SAT. U B M S of Compton College is funded through a five-year grant from the US Department of Education. An annual increments of two hundred and seventy-five, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And that takes place from September first, twenty eighteen, to August seventy-first of twenty twenty-two. It is designed to provide fifty-two students from both Compton and Dominguez High School with opportunity. To experience the college atmosphere and to graduate from high school. Next slide, please. So these are our actual U B M S participant demographics. Right now, we actually have fifty-five students, so we're serving three additional students. And the breakdown is follows. In ninth grade, we have eleven students, tenth, sixteen, seventh, seventeen, and twelfth, eleven. A total of fifty-five students. To further break down that U B M S participant demographics is. Our racial demographics. We have forty-six Latinx students and nine African American or Black. Participants with a total of fifty-five students. Next slide, please. In order to be able to enroll in U B M S, these are the federal department education standards. So a student, their families have to be a citizen or permanent resident of the United States. Be a first-generation college student, excuse me, not their families, just the student, needs to be a citizen or permanent resident of the United States. Be a first-generation college student, or, um. Neither parent can hold a bachelor's degree. They can hold an associate's or be in school to obtain their bachelor's, but. At time of enrollment, they cannot have the degree. And also be from a low-income family. The family's taxable income must not proceed more than, or excuse, excuse me, more than a hundred and fifty percent of the federal trio income. Poverty level. So let's discuss the U B M S services. We offer lots of services. We have one-on-one academic advising, tutoring. Saturday Academy, which includes SAT and ACT test preparation, interactive workshops, field trips. College and university tours. We also provide parent workshops and our awesome summer program. Next slide, please. All these components combined equal student success. Let's talk a little bit about tutoring. Tutoring is offered Tuesday through Friday from three to five thirty PM. And it is mandatory for students receiving a grade of B minus or below in any A through G classes. Cs don't equal degrees in upper bound math and science. It's optional for students who want additional assistance or want to quite place a study. And we also get many students that do that. I would like to add also, if students don't show up for tutoring and they're supposed to be there, they get phone calls from the tutoring. And if the tutors can't get through, they get a phone call from me or our program specialist. Our families know our number. Here's our tutoring annual contacts. Thus far, we've had six hundred and seven. And we are still continuing our tutoring. We are doing it remotely since COVID nineteen. Has taken place. Our Saturday Academy includes enrichment in math, English, engineering and science. We discussed major in career exploration, technology exposure, SAT and ACT prep. Educational and social cultural field trips. The students know I love to take them to museums, as well as workshops for the students and their parents. Here are our annual contacts for our Saturday Academy. Seventy-eight percent of our students actually. Attended our Saturday Academy, and that included during COVID nineteen. We have been providing Saturday Academy remotely. Next slide, please. We also provide, as I said previously, for parent workshops throughout the year. These workshops are important. They work with our families to help reinforce college knowledge at home and to help them. Um, feel more comfortable about sending their student, their child off to college or university. Parent participation, we have seventy-four percent. It is a little down from last year, but we did have to cancel our last parent workshop due to COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. Our summer program. I feel that this is a big part of our program, or I like to say, the meat on the plate. That we serve our students. Six weeks of the program, five weeks are at Compton College. One is at a residential week, uh, at a university campus. Last year, we went to Cal State Long Beach. During the six weeks, the students actually receive academic instruction in English, math, science, computer science. And a foreign language, which is usually Spanish. Here is a couple of photos of our amazing students. Next slide, please. Residential week. During residential week, students take their final exams. It provides firsthand experience to college life, allows students to visualize themselves on a campus. And it helps reduce fears from the parents and anxieties that they might have their child living on a college campus. I like to tell the story also, that it allows our students to understand what it entails to go to college. We had one senior a couple of years ago learn the lesson that he couldn't stay up till two in the morning. And try to get up for school at eight AM the next morning. So it also teaches them those valuable lessons, lessons. Next slide, please. Here's a picture of us at Cal State Long Beach, Go Beach, last summer, as well as another couple pictures. So whatever costs for services, all our services are free. I always tell our U B M S families, that's my favorite word. We don't charge anything for any of our services. So now let's delve into our program objectives. This is how the Department of Ed actually measures how we are doing. There are seven program objectives, and this objective data is from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Annual performance report, also known as the APR. Objectives one through six, oh, thank you. Objectives one through six. Measure the high school graduation class of twenty nineteen and all enrolled students in a given year. And then objective seven measures the high school graduating class of twenty thirteen. Eligibility criteria. So this is our first objective. The benchmark is set at sixty-six percent of our U B M S participants must be low-income and first generation. The outcome for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was ninety-three percent. Academic performance. Seventy-five percent of our participants must receive a cumulative GPA of two point five or better at the end of the school year. Our outcome is ninety-five percent of our students actually met that goal. And over ninety percent of our students actually have a three point oh or above. Next slide, please. Academic performance on standardized test. What this means is seventy-five percent of our U B M S seniors receive. At the proficient level on state assessments in reading, language arts and math. Our outcome for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was eighty percent of our students. Met that. Next slide, please. Objective number four states that, uh, for our secondary school retention and graduation. So what this means, the benchmark is set at eighty-five percent of our participants. Serve during the project year will continue to school for the next academic year at the next great level. Or graduate high school with a regular high school diploma. We met the outcome at ninety-eight percent. Objective. Five is about secondary school graduation rigorous study. Seventy percent of our U B M S seniors complete a rigorous secondary school program of study. Those A through G requirements we discussed. The outcome is a hundred percent of our seniors last year actually met that. Next slide, please. Post-secondary enrollment. The benchmark was set at seventy-five percent of our seniors. Will enroll in a program of post-secondary education by the fall term immediately following high school graduation. That means that students cannot take a gap year to be counted or starting the spring. They have to start immediately in the fall. Eighty-two percent of our students met that. With that outcome. Post-secondary completion, the final objective. States that sixty-six percent of our participants who enrolled in a post-secondary program. By fall term, following high school graduation, will attain either an associate or bachelor's degree. Within six years. So that's our twenty thirteen graduates. And out of the sixty-six percent, forty-two percent met that outcome. And I. Believe that in the future, that post-secondary completion rate will increase as our students are continued to be supported. Next slide, please. Ladies and gentlemen, Trio Works. This is a list of our students this year, and three of them, like I said, are with us tonight, and. We are going to go over their pictures and where they are attending. Um, this year, more than the last two, it's really, um, emotional and. Amazing to me to see our students do so well. I've seen them grow, um, from. Their sophomore year and now they're seniors and they're going to go off and do big things, and I'm really proud of each and every one of them. And so the next following slides, we will highlight them and where they are attending. Our first two seniors are Cassandra Cabrera, who is joining us tonight. Thank you, Cass. She is attending USC. She is also the Dominguez High School valedictorian. Good job, Cassandra. Our next senior is Christian Rosa. He is attending UCLA. And he is the Compton High School valedictorian. Christian really wanted to be here today. He had a family obligation. Next slide, please. We also have with us today Gerardo Gonzalez, affectionately known as, known as Gigi. He will be attending UC Davis. Jasmine Vera will be attending Compton College. Michaela Fields will be attending CSC Fullerton. We have Elvis Estrada, he will be attending CSC Long Beach. Jasmine Delgado, who's also here tonight. Thank you for being here, Jaz. She will be attending UC Riverside. And last but definitely not least, Jennifer Moore will be attending CSC Long Beach. And Alexa Leo will be attending UC Center Barbara. Do I have any questions tonight?
All right, board members, uh, Dr. Little, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Thank you so much, LaShawn, and congratulations to all of the wonderful scholars and all of the great schools that they are attending. Um, just a couple of questions and maybe you can provide this for us at a later date, but. In terms of the number of students, for example, you, you indicated, I think, about ninety-three percent meet the poverty. Um, and I'm just wondering where is that data coming from in terms of, I know that there is a lower requirement. But I'm just wondering where is that data coming from in terms of their economic, um, status and, and. In, in light of COVID right now, you, you indicated that students' parents couldn't, for example, have a bachelor's degree. And I'm just wondering if some of the students on campus, if they're not first gen, but they meet some of the financial limitations. can they take advantage, especially around the tutoring and that being a free service? Can they take advantage of those resources on campus? And then finally, you shared with us great metrics around usage. And I'm wondering, the percentage of contact, for example, I think it was like six hundred and two contacts or something like that. Do you have a metric for repeat? Or like, what percentage of the total number of students, I think fifty-five, use? Is it like a hundred percent of them use some of the services? If that makes sense to you?
It does.
That's it.
Dr. Curry, may I answer those questions?
Yes.
Okay. So for your first question, those guidelines that are provided from the Department of Ed, how we are able to ensure that they are low-income is the parents have to provide either a statement that they are low-income and that they did not file their taxes or the year prior taxes when they first joined the program. That's question number one. Question number two, regarding the contacts. It's a varied amount of how many students actually participate and take advantage of all of our programs. Objectives, however, I would say it's a steady seventy-five percent or more. As you saw, like seventy-four percent of our students actually attend our Saturday academies, and that is a large component of our program. And finally, regarding tutoring, the program only provides tutoring for our students due to federal department regulations. We are only able to provide tutoring services or any of our services to students who are enrolled in our actual program. Did that answer all of your questions?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Trustee Ramos?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes, I have some questions. And I'll tell you what page I have it on so that you could follow me. Okay, I understand the table of comments. What is TRIO? I was trying to look for it.
Oh, Trio, it's the nickname. It is what Lyndon B. Johnson called the first program. And that's because in the beginning, there was only three programs. So that's just a nickname that's stuck since.
Okay, okay. So can you go to page seven?
Sure.
Trustee Calhoun, I just want to just interject. Lauren, who has our screen, can you go back to the slide seven when the question has been asked?
Oh, seven, okay.
Regarding our partner school demographics?
Yes. Yes. I see Compton High. I see Dominguez High. What happened to Centennial?
Centennial is not part of the actual UBS grant. Hopefully, in the future, when we write additional grants, we will be able to include Centennial. Dr. Alvarado is on the line. I wasn't here at the time. If she would like to give you further information.
Yes, I would like to know why. Yeah, I would like to know why Centennial was not included in that grant.
So, Trustee Calhoun, when we applied, because we only concerned fifty students. So we applied, we had multiple grants we applied for, for upper bound math science, for upper bound math science. And we were not awarded for the extra grant to include Centennial High School. That's when we, it was a couple of years ago, Trustee Calhoun. And so this grant is a continuation of something that we already had. So we had prior experience points, and that's why I was able to keep the grant. But we applied for a new grant. Yep, we don't have the prior experience points. We were not awarded the new grant. If you want more information on the history of our grants and applying, we can provide that to you.
No, I don't, I don't need the history. I'm just concerned that Centennial is not in it. That's all. And I hope that eventually Centennial will be part of the grant since Compton Unified School District is part of our progress program, and that does include Centennial High. That's all.
So just for clarification, the Trio Works and the program for Trio, we can't utilize Trio as recruitment for the college. And so just the Trio rules, right? But when we apply for grants, our goal is to try to get all of our schools to be able to participate. The big issue here with the Trio and the Trio funding is a prior experience point. And if your existing grant is more likely that you'd be able to continue instead of being a new grant. But we are always looking for opportunities to include all of our partnerships schools, including Centennial.
And we go to page fourteen, which be UBS participant demographics. What happened? Oh, was this the one I want? Where there was, which one was the one that there was no non-African-Americans? Was that page thirteen? Where it says UBS participant demographics? Is two of them, thirteen and fourteen. And I thought I heard mentioned that, now on this one, it shows nine African-American slash black. On page thirteen, were they, on page thirteen? In this one, was there any African-Americans in this?
So, Trustee Calhoun, that actually is a breakdown of the grade levels.
Grade level.
So within those four grade levels, we have nine African-American or black students.
And is there a reason why that is so low?
We've worked tirelessly to have more African-American and black students enroll. If you notice in the beginning, Trustee Calhoun of the presentation, our racial demographics actually somewhat mirror Compton demographics and Compton High School and Dominguez High School demographics. So right now, there's only nineteen percent African-Americans at Compton and eleven percent African-Americans at Dominguez. And so we are on par with that demographic makeup.
All right.
I hope you to reach and recruit more of our African-American black students. That's something that I have done since I've come on. When I first started, it was three. And my team and I have now have nine students, and we hope to continue to grow those numbers.
Is there something that we're missing or they're just not interested? What are we missing? What are we not offering that we're, maybe it's not us missing? Is the information getting out? I heard what you just said, and I think that's a fan. I think you guys are doing a great job. Just let me say that. I just, I will say that because I read this whole, and I think that this report is very, very good. I'm just trying to figure out, are we not? Are they reluctant?
Can I jump in just for a quick second, Trustee Calhoun? And I think this is a great conversation to have as a board regards to the demographics of our community and the demographics of our institution, and also demographics of the student participation that we currently have in our programs. And always looking at the demographic breakdown of all of our, of all our student populations for all of our programs. I think it's important when we look at the upper bound math science program, and I don't want to short-sly what LaShawn mentioned, is to look at the numbers of students, of African-American students that have grown in her program since she's been involved as a program manager and the activities that are associated with recruitment. And so at a later board meeting, we can provide you the updated data regards to for the last couple of years, how the numbers of African-American students have increased, and then also the certain activities that they're doing for recruitment of students for the upper bound math science program. Now, regards to the logistic point that you're asking about, why are students not sign up? I let LaShawn sign up on that. I do want to provide the updated data of where we started and where we're at now, and what are some of our strategies.
Okay. One of our major strategies is trying to go into the classrooms that students are. And what I have done to increase our African-American student population is meet with the principals and see if we can actually partake in some of their black and African-American cultural events. Another thing that I would like to do, and I have not done as of yet, but I will implement this next coming year, is reaching out to churches in the community and trying to recruit that way. Also, we have tried with, one of the reasons some of our students might be reluctant is they are in sports. And a lot of our African-American students who are recruited, the Saturday academies can be a hindrance. So trying to build relationships with coaches and with advisors that help the students understand the importance of getting good grades. While I always tell the students, Richard Sherman, who came from Dominguez High School, was salutatorian, and he knew the importance of being an amazing football player as well as an academic star. So we use several different recruitment measures for our black and African-American students, and I use myself, right? I am one of the faces of our program. And as a black woman, I let them know that it's important that we continue to support them in our program. So we have several different measures that we're using, and we're always open to suggestions. So if you have any suggestions, Trustee Calhoun, I'll be happy to accept them. Going forward, I do hope to have more black or African-American students join our program.
Oh, thank you for that. But I still think that irregardless, if there's not even enough, I still think that this is a darn good, a good report. I think that you guys have hit everything and every measure and everything that you need to put down in this report. I think it is a well-versed report showing all the demographics, the partners, and everything, and how you started and what you did, and how it was before you came and what you have improved on. So I think this is a very excellent report. And Richard Sherman is a good person, you know, so. And good, you know, we also have Taishan Prince, and we have somebody else that's playing for the Cincinnati Bengals that is from Compton. I should think of his name because I know his mother. But I do understand, it is. It's tough and it's hard. And a lot of Saturdays, a lot of people don't like to give up their Saturdays for to come to class. Even if they did come, they don't realize how important this is and for them to know and for them to do. So no, I applaud you on this report. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Dr. LeBlanc.
LaShawn, I'd like to thank you for that outstanding report. And I was very impressed with the fact that the numbers have been increasing as the years have gone on. So the program is being very progressive, and the outcome is what really counts. When you look at the numbers, that shows you that the program is successful because the numbers are increasing. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't know if you covered this, but how are we celebrating the graduating seniors? I know usually there's a program at the end of the year for them. How are we acknowledging them this year?
Thank you, Trustee Lopez. So we are actually providing them a Zoom Senior Luncheon on June 5th at twelve o'clock. So if you would like to join us, I will be happy to share that information with Dr. Curry so he can share it with you all. And we, with COVID, we have tried to make sure that we're not stopping any of the services, like I said, tutoring and our Saturday academies, including especially celebrating our seniors. They're important to us, so we're still going to celebrate just remotely.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next presentation. Let me go back to board docs. We have our Special Resource Center, twelve point zero two.
So today's presentation for the Special Resource Center is being provided by Stephanie Slater, who is our Special Resource Center Director.
Hello, and thank you for the introduction, Dr. Curry. So today, I'm going to present our program and our student successes and our goals and objectives, as well as explain some other accessibility issues that the campus is working on. So if I could have the next slide, please. So the table of contents, again, I'm going to be describing our program and services offered our students and the makeup of the types of disabilities that we are serving, student success, accessibility. We just finished with our 508 Task Force Recommendations that was given to Dr. Curry. And we are also going to talk about the Distance Ed Captioning and Transcription Grant that is currently being utilized, especially in this important time when we have a lot of instructional materials that need to have captioning provided with them to make them accessible to students with disabilities, and then our current and future goals. Next slide. So the Special Resource Center, which is Disabled Student Services and Programs, provides support services, specialized instruction, and educational accommodations to students with disabilities so they can participate as fully and benefit as equitably from the college experience as their non-disabled peers. Next slide. And the purpose is to determine and provide reasonable accommodations and services for students with documented disabilities. So again, this is a voluntary program. Students are to bring in their disability verification, and the certificated staff examines that material as well as interviews and talks and has interactive meetings with the students to determine what would be reasonable and helpful accommodations. And we also ensure that all policies and procedures allow for accessibility. That means that students who need accommodations for campus events know how to request that and can access the events and any kind of sponsored activities that we host at Compton College. And we also assist in, can you go back, please? Just assist in maintaining accessibility to all college facilities, instructional materials, and again, the sponsor events. Next slide. So the legal requirements, this is under the ADA as well as the the Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, is that we are providing equal but not preferential treatment, equal access to instruction, services, activities, and facilities. Students with disabilities must also meet the same academic and technical requirements with or without accommodations. And accommodations, when a student has an educational limitation that affects the ability to acquire information or demonstrate their knowledge of course materials in a standard way. Next slide. So this is a list of the different types of disabilities that we serve. Acquired brain injury, attention deficit disorder, autism. Those latter two, we've had quite an increase in. Chronic health impairments, diabetes, you know, heart disease, communication disorders, aphasia, deaf or hearing loss, intellectual disabilities. Used to be called developmental disabilities. Learning disabilities, physical disabilities, mobility issues, mental health, and visual impairments. That could be blind or just low vision. Next slide. So here, if you can see the breakout, I've got three years of data with the student counts by disability and the percentage of the population it makes up. So we've been holding pretty steady with our number of students served. So in sixteen, seventeen, we had a total of three hundred and twenty-five students served, and that held steady, three hundred and twenty-four, seventeen, eighteen. And then our last year that we had data for would be eighteen, nineteen, and three oh four, a little bit of a drop, which is understandable given that we split from El Camino and are independently running as a college. But we are still making a lot of efforts to try to get the word out and increase our enrolled students and support them in their studies. Next slide. So I think this chart shows some significant increases in completion rates for disabled students solely. So you can see the number of associate degrees completed has disabled students solely. So you can see the number of associate degrees completed um has basically shot way up and has more than doubled as well as the AA degree and then certificate programs for thirty to sixty units compared to certificate program completion uh for uh eighteen to thirty units. So I I'm really pleased to see this this trend and we hope to continue with this trend and increase our completion rates for students with disabilities. Next slide. So here's some pie graphs that again are just showing sort of the breakout of what our SRC students are completing their degrees in. And again, um, you know, we had for total sixteen seventeen, we had twenty uh completed um degrees or certificates. Then we went in seventeen eighteen up to twenty-six and then eighteen nineteen forty-three. So we're we're on a good path, I think. Next slide. So the types of accommodations that we provide, um, the biggest one would be probably test accommodations. Students that need to have extended time and a distracting distraction reduced area. And this has been a little bit of a challenge for us now that we are completely online, but it's been working out pretty well. I have been impressed with the faculty who have been very good about getting the information they need if they're not receiving the paper form, they're contacting us, I'm reminding them how to set up the canvas shell to ensure that each quiz and test has the extended time. We're also reminding the students do not start an exam unless you see that your accommodation has been fulfilled. Sometimes accommodations include access to teacher handouts, extra materials, um slides like PowerPoints before class starts, depending on the type of disability, they may need those extra supplementary materials. Uh, flexibility on deadlines. Um, we do now, at times, if it's not going to inhibit the progression of the class, allow for some extra time for students to complete homework, assignments or projects. But that's a case by case basis and we always include the faculty member in that discussion to make sure we are not causing a fundamental alteration in the course curriculum. Assistive technology, we have a assistive technology lab, we've gone remote now and we're able to uh provide assistive um software, uh screen readers, alt media, things that help visually impaired and all the different kinds of disabilities that we serve. We provide interpreters or transcription for deaf and hard of hearing students and it's their preference. So that was a bit of a challenge again to set up the the extra uh remote interpreters for one of our deaf students, but we were able to do it and it's working out pretty well for him. Note takers is another uh big request that we are given. We we use both voluntary note takers as well as student workers to take notes in classes for students. Uh, we asked at times um as an accommodation for some flexibility on on absenteeism or tardiness, depending on the disability, uh preferential seating, adaptive furniture, if you're in the classroom. Students may need a separate table and chair or be in the front of the room or maybe in the back of the room if they have to take frequent breaks. Recording of lectures is another one. If it's part of an accommodation, um it must be allowed. And the faculty um will receive a contract that the students signs that um ensures that they will not use the recorded lectures for any other usage other than their own personal usage and destroyed at the end of the semester. We also have students that require a personal attendant um or perhaps a service animal or emotional support animal as an accommodation. Next slide. So the Special Resource Center is here to support all the staff and faculty at Compton College. Um, there may be some need for additional personal and academic counseling. There may be behavioral concerns, um questions about students uh as being eligible for services and why are they receiving certain accommodations? What to do about the code of contact if there are some infractions? We're there to consult and discuss these incidents with with the staff and the faculty. Um, we have interactive meetings um upon request. And we also, as I said earlier, always discuss any kind of academic adjustments that are more significant with the faculty to ensure that the student learning outcome is met and the technical standards are met and upheld. Next slide. So students have a responsibility, they have a responsibility to meet the essential qualifications and institutional standards. They must provide disability verification with accommodation requests in a timely manner. And that would mean every semester, beginning of the semester, we ask that the student meet with their counselor to discuss their their courses and what kind of accommodations are going to be necessary and applicable to that course. And we also encourage them to talk directly with their professor about their accommodations. We don't release information as to what the disability is to anybody either professors, but some students, you know, choose to disclose, but it's important that they do have some kind of meeting in a private manner to discuss the accommodations and how um they're going to be receiving those accommodations. Next slide. And the faculty have responsibilities to make sure that each course viewed in its entirety is accessible. And that means before the semester starts and what we always try to emphasize to faculty is to um to ask to get some assistance with making their their materials accessible um so that they their syllabus and their course materials can work with a screen reader or that the videos that they show or podcasts have proper captioning or transcription available. Even if they don't know, if they have a deaf and hardest hearing student that needs that, it's part of universal design and it's just something that they have to be ready for immediately. If a student with a disability um enrolls, but it's just, it's good practice to begin with. So they need to support and implement the reasonable accommodations or modifications as identified by the Special Resource Center certificated staff and consult with us if the request conflicts with the course objective or requirement. Sometimes we have to develop an alternative assignment or different mode of delivering that assignment. Um, and that's just something that we typically have the instructor as well as the student and the counselor discuss together to meet a reasonable outcome. And maintaining confidentially confidentiality is very important. Um, encouraging the students to speak with the faculty member about their disability concerns in private, even if uh they start bringing it up in class, it's just a better recommendation to say, let's meet during office hours or have that discussion privately after class. And if they're making an announcement that a volunteer note taker, for example, is needed for a student in the class, don't identify the student with the disability that needs the notes. You can make arrangements that the notes will be delivered to our office or electronically sent, but we just really wanna emphasize that to faculty to maintain confidentiality for our students. Next slide. Accessibility, so the ADA in section five oh four is the accommodation model. You're providing auxiliary aids and services to allow full participation by disabled students. But now we have section five oh eight, which is part of the Rehabilitation Act amended in nineteen ninety-eight. And that is really addressing the infrastructure that allows access for all and that's physical instructional access and electronic access. Next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, uh, we did have a five oh four five oh eight workforce uh group that studied Compton College where we were and what the law requires and made a list of recommendation. And this is also part of the twenty twenty-one Compton College Goals to implement Tarter Completion by Design to ensure all students complete more quickly with fewer units transferred and are employed in their field of study. And to do that, we must implement this five oh four five oh eight institutional standing committee to ensure universal design implementation in all institutional service campus wide. Next slide. So some of the recommendations I've listed for, so this is in two slides. So the first one was that all tech technology and required instructional materials are accessible to students. And so the objective is to incorporate universal design, standard UDL syllabi, a standard UBI so syllabi with a disability statement. So we've already done that to make sure that every instructor has um a disability statement. As far as having a standard UD UDL syllabi, we're still working on that portion just so we have consistency and ensure that everybody has their syllabus that is readable with a screen reader, for example. Um, ongoing professional development training related to universal design and five oh eight institutional effectiveness. Survey students and faculty related to UDL and five oh eight. So that's something that we are building. Alternative media request tracking system, uh that's something that we are required to do uh on an annual basis and we're looking into using CRM advice to track that information. It's just being currently tracked in a spreadsheet. The second recommendation from the workforce was all technology is accessible to students, faculty, staff and commu- and the community. And that means that um we really need to look and audit all the electronic and information resources, which is referred to as EIT. Develop a procurement process and vendor requirements for ICT, which it ensures that that all the the purchases that we make for um hardware and software is accessible. And adhere to the web content accessibility guidelines, which are currently WCAG two point O double A. And that again is a federal guideline that is been, you know, incorporated uh for the California Community Colleges to adhere to. And also to um have the UDL principles implemented by in Tarter Completion by Design and Course. Next slide. So the third recommendation was accessibility is part of the Compton Community College Board Policy and Regulations. So we currently do not have a a board policy related to five oh eight and universal design and I um our group provided some samples to Dr. Curry uh to review and we're going to be looking at developing a board policy related to that. Accessibility Standards Incorporated in Relevant Job Descriptions was another recommendation. So that the potential candidate understands that is part of their job responsibilities. It's not a function of Disabled Student Services, but rather the whole college, everyone at the college. Uh, we recommended to hire an instructional designer or consultant or perhaps a five oh eight accessibility coordinator or or consultant. And designate a web technician dedicated to accessibility. That means ongoing checking um to see if we are an accessible website, if everything is in order and that is a dynamic position because content is continuously added onto our website and changed. The fourth recommendation was accessibility is part of the CCC Systems and Pro- Procedure. So to establish a liaison at the cabinet level responsible for campus accessibility, create accessibility webpage and grievance process, which we've implemented. Continue the five oh eight work group as an accessibility committee and that's in the works. And in fact, I'm meeting with Elizabeth and uh Dr. Curry on that this week. And five oh eight consults with other standing committees. We have and um the distance ed committee and we also have the OER committee that um works. I don't know if I used the right acronym, but works on it, you know, making sure that um instructional materials are accessible. So we need to sort of coordinate responsibilities related to this overall accessibility issue as a college and and not have duplication within those committees, but rather sort of streamline and decide who's going to be responsible for what. Next slide. So the DECK grant, the DECK grant is run out of the College of the Canyons and it provides funding for community colleges to have live and asynchronous captioning and transcription at no cost. DEC supports faculty efforts to develop high-quality, media-rich, distance-learning courses. And hence they offer the these funds and it includes funding um of captioning. This is a recent addition, uh funding of caption or transcription for professional development, tutoring, library workshops, student orientations and information sessions. So it started a couple of years ago where it was only for truly online courses, but then it's morphed into a much more comprehensive grant that is, you know, continuing to evolve and capture even more programs. And so the process we are laying out now is that um we have to submit an application on it on for the spring and then the fall semesters and we are trying to get faculty to indicate and identify their needs early on. And that we would have the divisional instructional coordinators provide us with the form of the video that needs captioning um as well as the number of minutes that we get an estimate and basically it gets approved and they have pre-approved vendors that will do the work and then send it back and there's no uh charge to having those those captioning and tris- transcription jobs completed. Next uh slide, please. Um, some of our our current and future goals include, as I mentioned, the increase in outreach efforts through campus and community partnerships. Ensure that the campus website and instructional materials meet the five oh eight standards. Uh, hosting a transition fair, provide orientations, workshops. And we're also uh wanting to add an additional ed development class, which is a educational assistance class for students with disabilities. It can incorporate fifty percent non-disabled students, but it's just a support class. We have one currently for English and math, but we feel like the students are really struggling with technology. So we'd like to revive the uh the assistive technology course that uh was being taught in the past. And see if we can implement that to support our students in the SRC and outside of the SRC. And our staff is small but mighty, I would say. Um, I I'm the director. I came in very recently, October of nineteen. We've hired a full-time guided pathways counselor. That's Giovanni. He's been with us just for a short while, a couple of months. We have Travis Martin, our administrative assistant. We have an adjunct guided pathways counselor, Victoria Martinez. We have a guided pathways academic advisor, Devora Say. And we have Cliff Cliff Seymour. He's our full-time adapt adaptive computer technology specialist. So that concludes my overview of the SRC. Um, does anyone have questions for me?
Uh, we'll start off with Dr. Little. Dr. Little, do you have any questions or comments on the presentation?
You're on mute at the moment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was on mute. I did. Um, just a couple of questions in terms of especially now that we're utilizing Zoom. I know that you were mentioning about checking the website quite often to ensure that everything was uh meeting ADA requirements. Is there any assessment as to any gaps in access or challenges? Um, and if so, how is that being, you know, addressed in a timely manner for students?
Um, and may answer that, Dr. Curry? So um most definitely yes. So it started with a lot of students. Uh, even with the the laptop alone, they were still struggling and trying to take, do their coursework on their their phones. And so what we did is we set up um virtual um high-tech center lab hours. So twice a week, uh we have a Zoom meeting and we have breakout rooms. So Cliff and Devora can help students with their their individual needs. And so that might be they are are having difficulty understanding um how to And so that might be they are are having difficulty understanding how to you know, log into their their Compton portal and how to submit an attachment to upload into Canvas to submit their assignments. So there's been a very good response to those those opportunities for students to receive that tech support. And the beauty of Zoom is that Cliff can actually take over their computer and show them and fix it for them to reduce the, you know, the stress and anxiety because our students are are very anxious and stressed and, you know, we're really trying to encourage them to stick it stick with their class and, you know, try to get, you know, some flexibility with the instructors. So we've been reaching out to instructors a lot and asking them, please provide some, you know, support. They're really having a hard time learning some of these new programs because, you know, people are using different platforms. Some are in Canvas, some are in Zoom and and some of the students didn't really understand that we were, you know, their traditional classrooms moved to remote, but that meant they have to be in class at the same time they would have been in the physical environment. So the the high-tech center hours has been really helpful for students, I I believe, and we're going to continue that.
Okay, just just a couple of other questions. Some of it you can address later or we can just get a follow-up around faculty development in terms of access and equity. And what are some of the measures so for even sitting down back-to-back hours and what are some of the opportunities for those students who may not be physically able to sit for a long period of time or visually because of their vision? And then the instruction for the faculty to make those accommodations, even adding closed caption, for example, or differentiating their learning because some are more visual and the classroom environment was more advantageous. But if we can go back a couple of slides where you listed the various differently abled issues and the numbers associated with that. It was a right there. No, it's one right before that. I think it's one right before that. Well, it had, maybe that was it. We're listed some of the challenges, yes. So the biggest number, it appears, a hundred and eight are other disabilities. And I was just wondering what comprises that? And then the other numbers are psychological and learning disabled. And I'm wondering if there was any intersection either with homeless students and or veteran students.
Yes.
Little, can I just interject just a little bit?
Absolutely.
Your question, we will do a follow-up because it's, I want to make sure we give you all the data regarding professional development. So we can do a follow-up letter for that. And then the third question, we can, Stephanie can answer that as well. But I think a board letter would be good to provide you with more information regards to the professional development and also touch on accessibility as well.
Okay. Thank you. So I I can get that at a later time because I think I know Dr. Curry also in his letters around COVID has updated us on some of that, but I think it's very important to track because I think it can inform what we may need post-COVID and especially if we're going to continue if not all online, some hybridity. Thank you.
So Stephanie, could you ask, answer the second part of the question though?
Sure. So, you know, given there, we used to track primary and secondary disability and believe me, there's a lot of students that have, you know, comorbidity, they have two diagnosis. And, you know, just anecdotally, just seeing the students after this this transition because of COVID, you know, we, our students are really experiencing a lot of isolation, a lot of frustration, not having the resources they need, like a, you know, childcare or access to the home computer because of multiple people in the household. So we've been making recommendations along the way such as, you know, having more flexibility for turning in assignments. Don't make it, you know, so absolute because that student may not have been able to get on the computer or the the wifi was was unstable. I also, you know, been trying to encourage more content about student resources with mental health of what St. John's offers because you can go to the St. John's website and they do have quite a few numbers to call to get mental health support, emotional support. But I think that needs to be put really forward to our students because it's not just the SRC students, but they are, you know, more vulnerable and there's already, you know, information about people with disabilities suffering more under the COVID restrictions and certainly, you know, given we have been making such progress with completion, I I don't want that to turn the other way because of COVID. So we've also identified our summer class, we're doing some technology-specific workshops to really get these students ready for fall, making sure that they have the support and they understand the expectation before fall comes. So we're putting a lot of ideas together and and plans to really hit the technology side for students because as I said, some were still trying to go with the familiar of doing all their their work on their phone and they've got their laptops. So they just need that extra support and and encouragement to to transition.
Okay, thank you. And I look forward to a lot of the interventions that we've had and some sort of insight as to how they've helped and then some of the gaps. And you you briefly addressed completion rates. It would be good as well in the future to kind of see what I agree that the completion rates almost doubled in a couple of years, but definitely to see how we can increase those and what are some of the the barriers to that in light of the the one-year English and math. And you said you all hired a guided pathway counselor. So it'll be good just to get an update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Tracy Ramos.
I don't have any questions.
Tracy Kahoon.
No questions.
Dr. LeBlanc.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I too was interested in the disaggregated data on the other disabilities. So I'll wait until we get that information. And then the next question I had, if you can elaborate more on how students are able to access some of these services, given that they are remote now. I was saying before, they would go into an office and be able to speak with someone. And now if we're relying on the internet or if there's a phone access or depending on how they're able to communicate, what would be the best? How have we accommodated them?
Yes, we just updated our website. So we have a new student package. So included in that package, it gives a checklist of what the steps are that the student must take. And also, once they submit the initial application, which is available as fillable PDF online, and we provide a disability verification form they can take to their doctor or they can send us, you know, their IEP or 504 plan. But we're trying to be flexible, like the first semester, if they identify themselves as a as a disabled student, we'll say, you know, do you have disability verification? If they don't, we'll try to connect them with St. John's or resources where they might be able to get it or help them obtain their IEP or 504 from the high school. But we'll give them the benefit of the doubt and give them provisional services for a semester so that they have the time to get their disability disability verification without penalty. So we we do have everything with the outline of like the step-by-step for new students. You know, returning students know the routine. We're also, we've we've gone through our whole active population, reached out to each individual with phone calls, checking in, how you doing? You know what you need to do for summer school. So we're very hands-on and trying to make it personal to make sure that, you know, we're we're here for you. And we also implemented, we're doing this once a month. We just did, we do a social hour. We did Cinco de Mayo Taco Tuesday. We had everybody cook their food and show their food. And then we had like a DJ and people pick songs and they had a lot of fun. The staff had a lot of fun with that. And we're going to do a barbecue next week. So everyone has to barbecue and then we have some games set up just to connect the students, to make them feel like they're not out there and seeing us caring and some familiar faces. It's been good.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Provide some context about our special resource center and the next steps. It's very important to, if you look at our history of our special resource center, where we started from, where we're at now. When I arrived at Compton College in 2005, we had 2.5 staff members in our special resource center. And the we were at now has been tremendous and also number individuals being served. A part of the goals for the college last year was about 504, 508. In the planning, I think I have my meetings tomorrow with the committee regards to their recommendations. And the goals that the board approved last board meeting includes the implementation of the 504, 508 plan. So we're moving, we're strategically moving forward in the work that we're doing, the work with the student population, but also to be able to provide accessibility work to the or the campus. And so we want to continue to keep the board updated. So today you got some of the recommendations. We'll provide you with status reports as we go out throughout the year, as we used to 504 and 508. And we'll also follow back up regards to the questions for the day's meeting regards to the special resource center in Denver Rapids. I just want to say thank you to Stephanie Slater for the work that she's doing and also work of the team in our special resource. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so we have one more presentation, 12.03, AB75, Seymour Campbell, Student Success Act of 2012.
Yeah, so we've been working as a board. Yeah, we received the update last month. We did a study done by the RP group to our, we got some implementation of AB75, successful English and math. We have Dr. Dollar Cooper, who's the Z director for RP group, provided a presentation as relates to some of the data they collected this past year. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Dr. Curry. And thank you for having me here tonight. I am here to share some of the preliminary findings from the research that we conducted in fall nineteen and let you know where we are with the the overall research project. So next slide, please. So in case you're not familiar with our organization, the RP group stands for the Research and Planning Group. We are the representative organization for the researchers and planners who work at the California Community Colleges. And we also conduct research evaluations, professional development and technical assistance, providing all of those to the system. Next slide, please. Can, so I'm going to briefly go over and again, I said, I told I had 10 minutes, so there's a lot cut out of this, but you do have access to the the full reports there. So before I launch into it, I will say that I did not include anything in here about AB705 and background. I'm assuming, hoping, praying that you all have that background and that I don't need to explain AB705, but if I need to back up, I'm more than willing to do that. So we embarked upon this research project to to look at the college's efforts in terms of redesign in response to the AB705 requirements in the English and math areas. And the goal is to identify what, you know, basically what's working well, what may need improvement and what can help lead to students successfully completing transfer-level English and math. Next slide, please. So this past fall, we conducted a couple of different surveys and again, going to very briefly share with you some of those initial results. And then we are currently in the process of analyzing student outcome data that we received from the college and we're going to cross-tab that or triangulate that information with the survey data as well. So that's coming. But what I'm going to share with you tonight, what's here in bold is again, those initial findings from the two different surveys. Next slide, please. So first, we did conduct some online surveys with English and math instructors. The embedded tutors or coaches rather, or the SLAs and then the students themselves. So we administered those through the college's research office. And you can see here that we got pretty good response rates considering it's an online survey and there were no incentives offered. So anything above 10% for students is considered pretty good in this realm. And again, if you look in the full report, all the numbers are there. And then we got pretty good representation both for the faculty and the embedded learning support staff. Next slide, please. So it was a pretty long survey, but I boiled it down to one slide, which was not easy. But just very quickly, the key things that we heard from faculty through this survey was that they wanted to to support each other. They wanted to have communities of practice. They want to have more professional development opportunities in order for them to support their students better. From the students themselves, they want more support from faculty. They specifically mentioned things like clearer instructions, more patience, more time with the instructors and more time to practice the work. For the in-class tutors, again, the SLAs and the embedded coaches, they wanted more communication with the with the faculty member. And they wanted faculty to and the college to encourage students to use all the available supports. For example, writing centers, math labs, all the different resources that the college provides to students to help them in their English and math classes. And then what was cut kind of across all three groups was this idea that students need more in-class, hands-on support. And especially for things that aren't content-related, i.e. learning skills, time management, how to study, how to organize things. That's what they, and again, all three groups were in agreement that students needed more of this. Next slide, please. So the second group of surveys that we did was, it's called consequential validity, which really in trying to put it as simply as possible is where you compare students' perceptions about their preparedness and essentially whether they are in the right course to faculty's perceptions of students' preparedness. And you match the the records one-on-one. So you match what the specific student said with what the faculty said about that student in terms of their preparedness. And what you want to see is some kind of alignment between those. You don't want to see, you know, the faculty thinking one way and the students thinking another way in terms of whether that student is in the right course, whether that student is prepared to be successful in that course. So we again distributed this to, it was a paper survey that went out to English and math sections. We did a random selection. So we didn't, it was a sample, not all English and math sections. And again, here on the on the slide, you can see that we again got some pretty good response rates among those that were invited to participate. Next slide, please. So again, there's lots more findings than this, but the two that wanted to to highlight here is that the students and the faculty were in alignment about half of the time. Meaning that about in in half the cases, the faculty and the student agreed on whatever the rating was. And they were done. And you'll see on the next slide, it was a three-point scale essentially in terms of whether they were overly prepared, whether they were kind of just right or under-prepared for the course. The important note note here is that when the students and the faculty didn't agree, when their ratings didn't align, most of the time it was the faculty rating the students higher than they rated themselves. So there could be an opportunity here to work with students about their their self-confidence and their abilities regarding math and English. The second finding, we did ask faculty to rate the likelihood of each student passing the course with a C or higher. And we were able to, at the last minute, compare those ratings with students' final grades. Again, this is from fall. And so most of the time, in two-thirds of that time, the faculty assessment was in line with what the students' outcomes were. And that so that indicates that faculty are able to assess academic performance. I know there's, before you ask, I know there's an issue that the faculty is also the greater of these students. So there's there's an issue with that. But again, they were mostly in alignment. And I I think the opportunity here could be earlier intervention by faculty with those students that they have already identified, maybe not through a survey like what we did, but they're they're already working with students early in the term and starting to figure out which ones may need more support. And so doing that intervention as early as possible really benefit more students and we can hopefully shift more students to the passing. Next slide, please. So this is just an example of the table I was talking about where you're comparing the students' rating of themselves with the faculty rating of of the student. And the shaded cells in the diagonal are the places where they they were aligned. And then the the boxes below the diagonal are those places where the faculty member rated the student higher than the student rated. And then the the boxes below the diagonal are those places where the the faculty member rated the student higher than the student rated him or herself. And the boxes above the diet, the orange diagonal, are those places where the student rated him or herself higher than the faculty member. So again, if you do some quick math, you can see that the there are more students um below or more um the percentage is higher below the diagonal than it is above the diagonal, both in English and in the math. Next slide, please. And then this is what I was referencing in terms of comparing the faculty's rating of students' likelihood to pass with students' final grades. And the best way to read this is to do it by color here. So you would look at, let's say, the blue uh bar under English. What that means is of all the students who, where the faculty member said, these are the students most likely to pass, seventy-two percent of them did pass, twenty-eight percent did not. Again, looking at the likely number of all the students that were that the faculty member rated as likely to pass, fifty-eight percent of them did pass, forty-two percent did not. And then again, with the last one of those students where the faculty member rated them as not likely to pass, ten percent of them did pass, and ninety percent did not. Next slide, please. So our next steps, as I mentioned, is to to finish looking at the the outcomes data, the grades data um for fall nineteen and synthesize those with these survey results. And then compile all the information that we got from these different sources into a comprehensive report that tries to bring it all together and and ultimately answer the question of, so what does all this mean? Next slide. So I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Uh Trusty, Dr. Little, do you have any questions?
Just a couple of questions, very quickly. Um so one is just a larger issue with A B seven oh five that um we've discussed in the past in terms of student preparedness before uh the one year that may dictate their ability to pass and whether or not the assessments that faculty are using, that's a question that I have, was it based upon what, what time, like, how far into the semester were they asked to make this assessment?
Um Lauren, if you're there, you may be, if you remember um specifically when the uh consequential validity surveys went out, I think we were targeting somewhere around the midterm or maybe a little earlier.
We, this is Lauren, hello. Um we were targeting for earlier, but I think that ultimately it was um about four to six weeks into the term that we were targeting, and it was probably around six to seven weeks that we ultimately were able to admit, implement all of the surveys.
Okay, so they would have had some evaluations by then. And if it is conducted earlier in the semester, what what is, what tool is used to assess that?
This particular survey was a separate survey, um so it wasn't an assessment tool of students' preparedness. It was just asking faculty based on what they knew at at as of the time of completing, at at the time completing the survey, what was their assessment? So we didn't ask them what assessments they used. We just asked a very simple question, how do you assess the students' preparedness?
So we don't know if it was gut, we don't know if it was they took three quizzes and scored, because I think that makes a big difference, especially for me around equity and some of the deficit narratives that may give self-fulfilling prophecies with some of these students. And so we know that student motivation is directly tied to teaching expectations. And so I think that um especially with our commitment to diversity and equity and inclusion, that these insights um, it would be very helpful. Because I think one of my concerns is that if students are taking math, and I think they they have to take five or seven units, they're foregoing other classes. And if this is designed to lessen the amount of time at community college, but yet on the one hand, it may lessen English and math, but it's pushing further back other classes, is it ultimately achieving the goal? So um just as we continue to get student data, it would be interesting to see their experience with this. And obviously, to give faculty insight more about how they're evaluating and earlier on in the process.
No, that's a great, that's a great point. Thank you.
That's it.
As we move forward, and one of the recommendations that we're moving forwards for this year is the whole development of community of practice. And I think that will be a good opportunity for the faculty, we have those conversations over the next year on regard to students and expectations. We can, we can look at that as a part of our invitation of community practices.
I think that'll be great. And also with a student focus, like how many students dropped the class, let alone um didn't complete it and when in the uh quarter or semester they dropped the class, was it any consultation with the faculty uh before they dropped the class? But I do think the communities of practice will be great as long as they don't reinforce some kind of underlying stereotypical decision-making process that says, okay, here are the checklist for students who will or will not make it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Moving on to Trusty Ramos.
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Trusty Calhoun?
Yes, 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 yes. And and I might have missed the answer uh on page, page eleven. Page eleven. Under. I I like this bottom one, how critical it is about um early intervention for the ones that they uh think that they might not pass. I I think, I think that's good that you're catching this in the beginning, because we need to know. And then on the next page, which is page, oh, I'm sorry, page thirteen, should win the thirteen first. I think I'm reading this wrong. Is the ninety percent where it says English, is the ninety percent are the ones that did not pass, or is it the forty-two percent?
Technically, all three of those bars, the twenty-eight, the forty-two, and the ninety percent all didn't pass. But you, the way to to read it is that ninety percent goes with the other gray bar to the left under passed.
Underpass.
So you see the ten percent uh to the left. So the way that that you would read that is of all the students that the faculty said were not likely to pass, ten percent of them did pass, but ninety percent of them did not.
Because they were unprepared?
I can't say why they didn't pass. There's lots of reasons why students don't pass, and Ws are included in the did not pass group. So they, we we could obviously go dig deeper into this. We prepared this uh last chart here um a little bit right before we had to send it. So we could dig deeper to figure out of the did not pass, what, how many of them dropped?
Uh right. Okay, and then over on the next side where it says math.
Uh huh.
And so that mean twenty-seven percent passed, but seventy-three percent did not pass.
Of the students where the faculty that, where the faculty said these students are not likely to pass this course.
Okay, and so we can find out later if they were withdrawn or whatever.
Correct.
Because you didn't have time to do it at this time. Okay, I I was just, because I kept looking at the number, I said, no.
I know, I had to look at it too a few times and wa- and talk myself through it. So that's one of those things where, you know, it it's really good to get feedback sometimes to say, okay, we could probably present this better and more clearly. So that's why I wanted to make sure that I was able to walk you through it verbally.
Okay.
After one of our follow-ups on that, we can go back to slide thirteen and get more information regards to the not pass.
Dr. Curry, you went in and out. What did, you said something about thirteen?
I said, we can go back to slide thirteen and work with the RP group to get additional information about the students who did not pass, to address your question.
Oh, okay, that's fine. I I was just curious, because I'm looking at ninety percent, I'm looking at seventy-three percent, I say, what happened? And you're right, there's a lot of parameters on why uh they did not pass. It could have been withdrawn, or and it's just not captured in that. So, so, and you didn't have time to do it. So the next time something like this is done, will you be able to capture or or you still won't be able to tell uh the issues of why uh so many uh did not pass? Because you can't figure if they withdrew or whatever, I don't know. Am I asking the right question?
I I will answer your question, which is, again, I want to point out, this is, these are not pass rates for the whole class, just one portion of the class where the faculty said these students are not likely to pass. So I'll clarify that. And yes, we can definitely um provide more information, um breaking down all of those bars to say, well, out of the ones who did not pass, what is the withdrawal rate versus those stump, those students who earned a D or an F in the course?
How did they know they wouldn't pass? They had already given the test? Or they have figured it out, or how did they know they weren't going to pass?
I wouldn't say they knew. I think they were based on their experience, based on their their assessments to that point in the semester, whether the student was struggling or not, whether the student was showing up to class or not, those kinds of things.
Student was being tutored or not?
If the faculty knew that, yes.
Uh, I'm gonna leave this alone, but you said if the faculty knew that. So I'm I'm gonna leave this alone, but you say if the faculty knew that. But if they knew that it was ninety percent and seventy-three percent, they had to have gotten it from someplace.
Again, I think it's based on their own assessment, having been a teacher in most cases for many, many years. And if you talk to faculty, they often get a sense. And sometimes they're right, and sometimes they're wrong, which is what this shows, of which students are likely to pass the course based on what they've seen up to a certain point, and which ones are going to struggle to pass the course.
Okay, so if the faculty can sense that and know that, because they've been doing that, what other options did they have to offer those students if they could sense that? And they can know that, because they have been a teacher of faculty's for so many years, this like, okay, you prejudge me. I'm not saying that's what they did. I'm just saying already that if they already know that the person is not going to pass, what is the obligation of the faculty to do in order to help that, assist that student in order to pass, at least with a C? Hmm, no answer.
Dr. Curry. Why, there uh, there's a board member who has her hand up.
Is she going to answer the question, or is Dr. Curry going to answer the question?
I'm gonna jump in, and I'm gonna give it back to Dr. Dr. Cooper. I would say that when we have the conversation on the board meeting about the two of those, both. And one of our, one of our issues that we're trying to work on is seeing more students compete transfer level English and math. You have the one, the perception issue regardless of student, whether you pass or not pass. Two, what type of support services we provide those students? Three, what type of early intervention that we provide to the students, ensure that they're successful. So this is a challenge for us, and this data is going to be helpful as we continue to have these conversations. Dr. Cooper want to add anything on that?
I would say you you asked the, you asked the right question. And I think the other question is how do faculty and 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 students work together? Because I don't think it's all on the student, and I don't think it's all on the faculty. It has to be a partnership between the two. But if the fact you're, I I agree with you, if the faculty are seeing something, what is their their obligation to step in? And at least, you know, whether you have an early alert system, whether it's just reaching out to that student to say, ha, hey, I care. I see that you're struggling. What what can, what what do you need? What's going on? Talk to me. Let's, let's see, do you know about tutoring? Do you know about this? Are you using that as, what what may be preventing you? Uh what or what may be causing your 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 struggles? What what kind of challenges, challenges are you facing? But the student also has to be receptive to that hand when it reaches out to them.
Maybe it's how, it could be how they're being taught, and maybe, you know, everybody, okay. So everybody can teach, but everybody can't teach. It, and and I say that all due respect, because I enjoy our faculty. So I can only use me. Um, I wasn't good at math. I was not. But if I looked at it when I was in high school, don't ask me now, when I was in high school, I could give you the answer. But the teacher wanted me to work it out, where there was multiplication, division, subtraction, wha- whatever it was. The teacher say, no, you have to work it out. But I would give the teacher the the answer, and he say, how did you get it? And I'm going like, uh, I just looked at it and I saw it. So all through school, from elementary all the way up to high school, I had issues with math because my teacher wanted me to work it out. And I would ask the teacher, okay, what are you talking about? If I could see an answer, well, I gotta work it out, because you have to know how to work it out, because you might get something else. So I see it here like, no, no, stop judging me. I could get it if you give me something. And maybe I'm not getting it from the way you're teaching it, but I could get it if you just show me a little bit more. That's all. And maybe the student felt intimidated and didn't want to do it because of how the teacher was teaching. That's all. Some catch on fast, some don't, and that's why some are left behind, because the teacher has to continue to teach that class, right? So I'm a teacher, if I got thirty students, I'm sorry, I don't have time for ten of y'all that can't get it. But as a teacher, I should have time for the ten that don't get it and still help the ones that do get it. That that's where I'm coming from. I see me in in this scenario right here in English and math. That's all.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Dr. LeBlanc?
Trusty Calhoun, thank you for your example, but based on this graph here, I don't see you in it. Um, this is, what did it say, faculty likely uh, what 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 they're looking at? If you're the one turning in work, even if you're not showing the work, you're not in that scenario. This is the group that's not coming to class, and you say, well, how does the instructor, you know, project that, yeah, this student is probably not going to do too well? That's because the student missed sixty percent of the homework assignments that were due that first week, came in late.
Okay.
Um, and and then flunked the first test. That's, it it's more of that kind of scenario as opposed to the one who's turning in work but just maybe missing a few steps in the process. That's who you can work with. That's.
All right. Thank you, Dr. No, thank you, because I I wasn't getting it.
No, no, you you're you're over here in this fifty-eight percent.
We get the data to actually substantiate that, because my concern is that that may not be the scenario for a lot of students.
All right, there you go. Could be either or. Half full, half empty. I see it half full.
And empty, thank you.
There you go.
It's full.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Cooper, for your presentation.
Thank you.
That's it. And um in the chat, Trusty Little asked um, what the, what is a passing grade? And is that the, is that data disaggregated by race, gender, and year for both faculty and students?
Certainly. Uh, passing grade is a C, because you need to have a C to in these courses to to qualify for transfer. Um, as far as the disaggregation, we can disaggregate, we haven't yet. Um, what I mentioned about wanting to look at the rest of the the student outcomes data and triangulate that with the two survey uh the, from the, data from the two surveys, that's, so it's on the list, is is my answer, is that we will look at that. Now, we, to my knowledge, we don't have race, gender for faculty. We only have it for students. I can talk to Lauren uh about that, but we should be able to um disaggregate for students.
I think the faculty is key as well, because we are continuing to talk about the disproportionality between the race and gender of community college faculty. And I think it it should be part of the discussion.
We can definitely discuss it.
Thank you.
Sure. And then year, you mean whether they're a first-year student, second-year student? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
We probably wouldn't uh, we probably use units earned. So someone who has zero to fifteen would be, uh, I'm sorry, zero to thirty would be a first-year student, or we could do it by semester, they're in their first semester. There's some issues with that in terms of whether we have information about whether they've attended other schools prior. But we could, we could say whether it's their first year at Compton um or second year at Compton with greater certainty than if they're a first-year student, second-year student.
Because sometimes their past experience may dictate their ability to matriculate. And so I'm just wondering if we're continuing to see patterns of students who are later in their career or if they've tried several times and trying to come back, are those barrier classes?
And we can also look at age. Uh, again, it's somewhat of a proxy, um, because there's lots of different stories for students of of a um more mature age. But yes, something we could look at. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And moving on to Ida.
Moving on to item thirteen, which is consent agenda item. Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda? It's been moved by Dr. LeBlanc and, um, seconded by trustee, I mean, Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
All right. Can you give me the? There's a lot, so I'm gonna call you the regular order. And then I'll, I'll make a note of them. So Dr. Little, do you have any consent agenda items?
No.
Trustee Ramos?
No.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes. Um, you ready?
Yes.
Just for thirteen, thirteen twenty-five.
Okay.
Thirteen twenty-six. Thirteen twenty-seven. Thirteen twenty-nine and thirteen thirty. Thirteen thirty-five. And I'd like to let you know, uh, Dr. Curry has answered my questions. But Dr. Curry always liked me to bring them out anyway, so that the answers can be put in the.
Is that, is that for anything addition aside from the ones that you provided me?
Well, that's just for thirteen. Do we need to go farther?
The last one you gave me was thirty-five. Is that your last one that you've mentioned you have? Uh, you want to discuss or when, you said you had some answers already, some questions already answered. Did you wanna share those?
Yes, if you want the answers already, you can let Dr. Curry give the answers. I can give him to you what he, what he told me. Because I always turn in my questions so that he can answer them. So.
Sorry, let me go back. Is the, the questions and the answers that, the questions that you asked and the answers you received, are they for in addition to the numbers that you have given me or is it for something else?
Um, I have other ones, but that's fourteen, but we're on thirteen. If I'm understanding, okay. For all of thirteen, the ones that I gave you, Dr. Curry has answered them.
Got it. That's.
What I'm saying is he always liked me to ask them anyway, so it could be part of the thing. That's all.
That is correct. And so, um, I will move on to Dr. LeBlanc to see if she has any, um, item that she wants to go over.
I do not.
All right. And then I believe I saw trustee Lee. Is he still on?
Yes, I'm still on.
Okay. Did you have any items that you wanna discuss? Thirteen ten. And so we will start with thirteen ten, just by numerical order. Trustee Lee, your questions?
Like, for, for, for disability students, we, we seek to like more help, more assistance, because we don't wanna have one counselor and a fewer, like Cliff, like Clifford, he, he, he up there by himself and like really extra help for disability, for disability students.
So, uh, the, the item that you pulled, which is thirteen ten, is a policy fifty-one forty. And I'm trying to, it doesn't list, um, the department faculty in that policy. So which, which part are you referencing?
Let me see. I, I don't see it in my hand. I don't see it in my hand.
So, trust, uh, Board President Lopez, if, if I may, I could provide an update to the board in, as a board letter next month, or to trustee Lee, regards to the staffing for the Special Resource Center and also regards to their budget, which was a little bit, was provided in the previous presentation. But we could, uh, we can provide him with an update on that. But this part, board policy does not, uh, impact the staffing. This required board policy, uh, that we post have for our Special Resource Center has been updated for disabled programs. Services has been updated and also the, uh, administrative regulation as well. Staffing update.
Okay, so, um, trustee Lee, uh, we will have a response, um, and we'll make sure that it gets emailed to you directly, because I know that, um, this is your last board meeting.
Yes.
All right, so bear with me. Um, then we are going to move on to thirteen point twenty-five, which is, uh, the administrative services purchase orders, blanket purchase orders, and personal agreements.
So, uh, the trustee cap twenty-five, trustee Calhoun had a question regards to, let me go back to her question. Okay, so she had a question regards to one of the POs, uh, regards to, um, the, it was one of the construction and their contract. Am I correct, trustee Calhoun?
Does he have a number to reference trustee Calhoun so that the, um, who's directing the screen can pull it up? You're on mute.
Oh, it was related to the PO for, uh, for, um, pre-construction and United Hyder, which is part of the, um, which is part of the action agenda for today. So I can address that more so when we get to the action agenda item. Because the question was regards to PO and also their contract. Item thirteen point two-six and two-seven, these were contracts trustee Calhoun had a question regards to going through June thirtieth of twenty. This is extra, this is revenue. I just keep going or should I?
That's fine.
Uh, item thirteen point three-five, uh, trustee Calhoun had a question regards to the MOU with the, uh, two federations, regards to, uh, trainings for faculty and staff, uh, as it relates to, it was cert training, uh, regards to protective equipment. So her question was, is there a requirement for staff and faculty employees for training regards to cert, cert, for, uh, and my response was, no, we provide online training for fa- for faculty staff regards to, uh, disaster preparedness and we providing trainings. But wanna continue to look, my response is also is to continue to look for additional training opportunities for our employees. And thirteen point three thousand, sorry.
Okay. Do we have any further dis?
Did you answer, uh, thirteen twenty-nine and thirteen thirty about why two abatements?
Oh, sorry. So thirteen, um, twenty-nine, let me go back to my screen, thirteen twenty-nine and thirteen thirty, uh, the question was about the abatement. So thirteen twenty-nine is the abatement for the cleanup for instructional building number two. And then, uh, thirteen thirty is the study for the abatement for the vision performing arts complex. As the board is aware, we're working on our final, uh, proposal for state funding for the vision performing arts complex. We have to get that survey, uh, completed as well for that. So it's two different studies and two different locations.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? All right, seen and Ms. Paula, can you call the question? Can you call the vote?
Paula, there you go.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Calhoun?
Aye.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number fourteen, action items. The first one we have is Compton College District Resolution Number Zero Five, uh, One Nine Twenty Twenty B to take necessary actions regarding the Oliver W. Connor Estate. Do we?
Do you want me to give an overview?
On that one, just please, because I know that we had something similar in the last month, so if you could just highlight the difference.
So last month, it was, the idea was to bring this forward back to the board, uh, regardless of Oliver W. Connor. So Lauren, if you can open up the attachment, that'd be helpful. Okay, so what I wanted is to just go over, we're working on trying to close out the estate. And I wanted to basically give a background to the board of, of the history of Oliver W. Connor. You also have the properties that are associated with Oliver W. Connor. And then the last part is the next steps of things that we have to do as we move forward. There's conversations early on about what are we gonna do with the property and our next steps. The board has made it very clear. And we wanna keep the property. And so the district has moved forward as we used to keep the property. They'll be under a foundation as we move forward with the implementation of our foundation and hired a foundation manager, which the board approved the job description. And so this gives you all the steps that we have to implement to move forward and then the board can be able to track the next steps as they to the Oliver W. Connor Estate. And I recommend approval. I worked with our, um, our, um, state administrator and also our legal team as they to this, uh, resolution.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any, um, discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Wait a minute, is this fourteen oh one?
Yeah.
Dr. Curry, you didn't answer my question.
So trustee Calhoun has a question regards to, um, how do I say this? Uh, so trustee Calhoun asked a question regards to Gary Pickett, who is the brother of Oliver Connor, and he, he has been a problem regards to the state. And that's why he was removed as administrator. And so we've been working with him to be able to close out the accounts and the money and all that as they to the state. But he has been a problem, uh, from the beginning, and that's why we were able to sign our own administrator to oversee the state.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, that was, that was the same question I had. I was trying to understand what Gary, I know Gary Pickett is the brother, but I was trying to understand, uh, what his role in this process was at this time.
Yeah, and, yeah, so he's, he's out of the process. He's out of the process, but we're asking him for additional information as we close out.
Okay, and so what has Gary done to so far? It, has he filed action or just what?
No, no. He has not filed action against the district, but what we're doing is he was a previous administrator of the state prior to the district taking over the state. And so we've been working with our administrator and also with Gary Pickett, for example, we had to get bank statements from him. We're trying to get just as much information as possible to close out the state, and we're trying to get the tax information as well.
Okay, and it's being withheld?
No, no, no. It, it was a problem at first, but now we're mov- we're moving things forward.
Okay.
Once we took over the state and we had our own administrator, things are happening now. But in the beginning, it was not happening when he was overseeing the state.
All right. Thank you.
All right, see, no further discussion. Ms. Paula, can you call the vote?
Trust, excuse me, trustee Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Yes.
Dr. LeBlanc?
You're muted, Dr. LeBlanc.
Aye.
Thank you. Da- uh, Barbara Calhoun?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Okay.
Moving on to item fourteen point zero-two, Compton Community College District Resolution Number Zero Five One Nine Twenty Twenty C Budget Transfers Augmentations for Fiscal Year Twenty Nineteen Twenty Twenty. Dr. Curry?
That's a, that's a routine item for the district regards to budget transfers for the month of April. I recommend approval.
Right. Do, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. LeBlanc and seconded by Dr. Little. Um, do we have any discussion on this item? We are on fourteen point zero-two. All right, see, no discussion. Ms. Paula?
Trustee Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Trustee Calhoun?
Aye.
Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to fourteen point zero-three, facilities planning and development, uh, development contracts over ninety-five thousand two hundred for PCM Three Incorporated. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by, uh, Dr. LeBlanc. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I wanna bring to light that we went out to bid in two thousand seventeen for peace for construction management. PCM Three wanted to bid for that. Uh, this, what we did with our contract, we don't issue a contract with the firm. We're at that point to begin the project. So we're now at the point to begin the project of the renovation of vocational technology building. That's why this contract is being brought forward, but there are already more to bid in two thousand seventeen. Did we do an individual contract for each of their projects? And I recommend approval. That was a question that, uh, Calhoun asked as well, regards to two thousand seventeen purchase.
All right, do we have any discussion from the trustees? I don't see any. All right, Ms. Paula, can you call the vote?
Trustee Calhoun?
Aye.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Aye.
Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item fourteen point zero-four, facilities planning and development contracts over ninety-five thousand two hundred amendment for United Hyder Inspection Group. Um, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved, um, by Dr. Little and seconded by trustee Ramos. Do we have any discussion on this matter? Everybody talked at the same time. Let me have Dr. Curry goes first to give some background and then I'll call in the trustees.
So this is a project regards to the, uh, inspection for instructional building number one. And the reason for the increase, including our board letter, was an update on this project and also of this increase. This connects to the purchase order that Calhoun asked about earlier. I've asked Linda Owens to add some more background information on this and also on the reason for the increase. Linda? Hold on for a second, let me unmute. She's there.
Okay, good evening. Good evening. So this amendment is for United Hyder and Instructional Building One. Uh, their original contract was approved back in, uh, May, no, no, January, actually January twenty nineteen. So this isn't the most up-to-date contract. That's not good. Um, so now we are going back to the board because there were several changes or change orders or unforeseen conditions that were occurring at the site. For instance, when we were over excavating, we ran into wet soil and it took an additional thirty days to get to remediate that area. We had to add additional rock, which meant that the inspection group had to go out and continue to test for the correct compaction. And that took a number of days and there were, uh, fees assessed for that or expenditures against their existing contract. So we're almost a, less than a year away from completion. However, we're gonna run out of money if we don't, um, amend for this for the additional eighty-nine thousand. So this amount should get us to the end of the contract. Uh, and this includes all future inspections, because there are still some special testing that has to be done at Instructional Building Number One. So this would cover it.
All right, and Dr. Little, do you have any questions?
Yes, yes, I actually did. Thank you, Linda, for the explanation. I'm just wondering if it almost equates to a third of the contract or half of the original contract. And so is it, does that equate with the number of hours and days and what is the foreseen? Are there any additional costs that we foresee? And what is the foreseen? Are there any additional costs that we foresee?
No, this should get us to the end of the contract. This is based on what was left over. Uh including any um special inspection that would need to be done as a result of the design. So in initially, when they do the calculation, they don't have a full set of the schedule. So they only have a tentative schedule, which gives them a basic idea of some of the tests that would need to be done. And it's not until they actually get into the uh scope of work that they run into, that this particular time they run into issues that we're coming back to the board to get an amendment so that we can successfully build the building.
Okay, and we'll we'll have in writing uh mitigation. So if there's any potential issue, like you were saying with the packing of the ground, if there's any issue with the building, they they assume liability now that they are signing off that we're we're efficient?
They're they assume liability with the uh compaction.
Thank you.
And and the language, Dr. Little, regards to liability is included in the contracts uh that we have with uh Hyder.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, I was muted. Moving on to trustee Ramos? I'll go, I'll get, oh.
I got you.
Do you have any questions?
My my question was answered.
Got it. Uh trustee Calhoun?
I I think I missed it, but did I hear you say this was the oldest contract and need to be updated?
Yeah, the the correct date is January fifteenth twenty nineteen.
I got you.
That was the date of the original. So this is an amendment to there. So the POs that you saw previously were POs for the original contract amount. So that's what you you're finally seeing the PO that's associated with that initial contract.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Dr. LeBlanc?
Just a clarification. So Linda, you're saying that the original agreement date is not January twenty twenty?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So so the project started last year. And uh and then what was your, what is your projected end date?
We're still projecting to end the end of this year. We can, well, the end of this year, which sweeps into like January, late January, we're scheduled to be complete by February first twenty twenty one.
So basically about a twenty four month project.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh trustee Lee, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have questions.
All right, um. See, no further discussion. Ms. Paula, can you call the vote?
Trustee Lee?
He's muted or frozen.
Or gone.
No, he was right there.
Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Trustee Calhoun?
Aye.
Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Trustee Lee is uh he's unmuted.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
All right, moving on to fourteen point zero five uh facilities, planning and development, change order report, Monaco America Corporation DBA Menco. Um can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. LeBlanc and seconded by trustee Ramos. Um do we have any discussion? And Dr. Curry, can you give background before we I move on to the trustees?
Yeah, there's an error on the document on the title. It says public safety facility, but it's not. This is a part of the uh concrete area south of the student lounge. We utilize our property liability fund through SWAC, which is statewide association for community colleges. Uh so we, what we did was we had uh safety issues. And so in the month of April, we, the board approved the contract for the uh new concrete. We added a C to it, so it can represent Compton. And so that's why the change order is a thousand, it was fourteen hundred dollars for that change order. It is not being used by district funds, but been used by SWAC funds, and I recommend approval of the change order.
All right, uh trustee Little, uh Dr. Little, do you have any um discussion?
No, thank you.
Uh trustee Ramos?
Nope.
Uh trustee Calhoun?
Yes, uh that was one of my questions uh with Dr. Curry that he did answer, because I was trying to figure out. I was trying to understand how how did they um leave the C out? Uh which I know that when they do all the projects, the C should be up there. And uh so he, what was your answer, Dr. Curry? I think I got it, I can't.
My answer, we added, we, this is the first time we put the C on the concrete. And so um it was an idea that Linda and I talked about yeah, right before they started to work, to put it right in front of the student lounge and it'll all able to work out for the project.
Thank you.
All right, uh Dr. LeBlanc, do you have any um discussion? The Dr. LeBlanc. No, okay, got it. Uh trustee Lee, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
All right, see no further discussion. Ms. Paula, can you call the vote?
Trustee Calhoun?
Aye.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Aye.
Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um moving on to, sorry, my computer froze. Moving on to discussion action items, number fifteen. The first one on the board, we have fifteen point zero one, Compton Community College Board Study Session. And if we can highlight that, fifteen point zero one, if you don't mind. Um Dr. Curry?
Yeah, so we're planning uh the, so the board approved that a part of the uh schedule for uh the board meetings, you approved the study session on Saturday, July twenty fifth from twelve to four o'clock PM. Uh and you also asked me to follow up at that time about Helen Benjamin being the facilitator. And so I just want to make sure that this is through the direction from the board, so we can move forward with implementation. Dr. Benjamin will be working with the board president regards to the next steps uh for the board study session. If everyone's okay with the date and time, uh I can start moving forward with getting everything set up for that. If there needs, if you want to make sure that she discussed, you can let me know as well. She will also be following up with the board president. I just need some direction.
And board members, um the question that um I'm asking you is if we continue with the date of July twenty fifth, can we move it um to the morning portion of the day versus the afternoon? Um before Dr. Curry reaches out um for um Dr. Benjamin's availability?
He's only available in the morning?
No, I I just, or currently, our board session is scheduled from July twenty fifth, um and it's in the afternoon. My question is, uh do we want to leave it as is? Or can we move it up earlier in the day and not have it in the afternoon?
I can't make the morning. That's, that was one of the reasons I think we switched it, because we didn't want to switch the date, but I can't make the morning. And I cannot make the morning. I just gave that schedule to the affirmative action committee. And uh so they said they would do it in the morning. That way I wouldn't have to. I can't do morning, I'm sorry.
No, okay, so we'll leave it as is, um same date and time.
And just for clarification, it will be virtual if we don't have clearance, correct?
Yeah, everything is going to be, we we, the board meetings are are for July will be on on Zoom. And so, yeah, this will be virtual.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any conversation about discussion for that board meeting? I know you probably want to talk about your goals a little bit, and then probably the vision statement again, just to say where we're at. Is there anything else that you would like to see covered that day? Uh so I can be able to follow up with uh Dr. Benjamin?
Probably, um.
So I'll call on Dr. Little first, and I think you talked about, you had some questions I want to say in closed session, so I don't know if you want to bring those up?
Ooh, if I can remember, but yeah, those questions um that we, I think Dr. Curry had already documented those, that he said we can have as a topic. I don't know if you remember those right now, Dr. Curry.
I'll look back at my notes, but I can give you a second.
From closed session, but another one would just be navigating governance through crises and risk management. Because I think both the COVID situation, as well as being proactive um from a budget standpoint with the state and its potential uh concerns. I I think that would be a very important topic for us to discuss.
Um can, is that it, Dr. Little? Like in?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, trustee Ramos?
No.
Trustee Calhoun?
Oh, no.
Dr. LeBlanc?
No.
Uh trustee Lee?
He won't be there.
No.
Okay, and then um Dr. Curry, the um only thing that I would like for us to continue, or at least provide an update, I know it'll be too late, because it'll be in July. But if we can talk about the budget a little further with the impact of may revise um and how those numbers continue to change as um tax filing date um comes sometime in July. I know it's actually a lot, but really understanding the and navigating the waters moving forward for our finances too.
That's a lot.
All right, do you have any questions of us, Dr. Curry?
No.
All right, moving on to fifteen point zero two, Compton College twenty twenty virtual commencement ceremony. This is where you would give us an update, Dr. Curry?
So in your packets, uh we included information about the virtual commencement ceremony. It's scheduled for uh June the twelfth of twenty twenty, and it starts at eleven o'clock AM. It'll be a virtual commencement. We have already did the videotaping for the uh for most of the stuff. We're still working on the student videotaping, and also we have another recording I had to work with Heather on for people to provide congratulations. I know some board members are interested in doing that as well. And we'll send you a link for you to be able to upload a video that we can put inside of the uh commencement video. And once I, we give some instructions out uh sometime this week. I just want everyone to know we've been focusing on the uh graduation uh petitions. Ensure that we got all the petitions completed, and students are invited to participate. And then able to provide a five to ten second video for our video. So our goal is we have to get the video done prior to June twelfth, and then I'll have the video in a drop at June twelfth at eleven o'clock AM.
Uh Dr. Curry, uh since all of the board members that are currently on the board were together at the last conv- uh graduation, is there a way that you can maybe take some of the footage or take a couple of the pictures from that and interject it into the um the video?
So one one of these we did, we're doing is that uh through the video, I introduced the board members, and we're using a picture of the board members for that. But then also, I think it'd be a good idea, since we're having a little videos of congratulate the students, to have a small video from each of the board members. That's five to fifteen seconds towards the end of the show to congratulate them from the board members. And you know, I think that's important. I, well, the one thing that's that's frustrating for me was this would be the first time the board members to be able to hand out Compton College degrees, and that's not going to be able to happen that day. It's to be able to do a video, I think it would be uh a little add-on for the board member.
Okay, so you said that the board, the board will be shown at the beginning of the video?
Yeah, it'd be so, I'm introducing each board member, and we're showing a picture of the board member, and then we're going to ask the board members, we'll send you instructions sometime this week regards to providing like a five to fifteen second congratulations to the graduates.
Okay.
And that's towards the end of the show.
Okay.
Nice. Do we have any other discussion from the board? Dr. Uh trustee uh Calhoun?
Dr. Curry, where where do I see? Where do, Dr. Curry, where do I see that you're going to do a sign with twenty twenty on it graduated and with Compton College name on it?
So so as I I mentioned to trustee Calhoun, and and that, this is before, we talked about it last week. Because one of these we're looking at doing is lawn signs, and that's something I want to follow up on. But I was waiting for the staff, because they've been working on a lot of different things, that before I added another thing to the plate. But we're looking at the lawn signs and saying congratulations from Compton College, so people know who graduated this year. But the first thing I had to get the staff finished with was the uh petitions for graduation. We have to send out the diploma covers for the students. We have to send out the uh their tassel and also copy the program. So the lawn signs is something extra we're adding to that, but we will do that, and we just, I gotta give my staff a a little time to finish project one, and then we can start working on project two.
Are are your staff receptive?
I think they will be receptive to it. Uh both colleges are doing that. The question will be, the way we set it up is that students could pick it up directly from campus police to make it a lot easier, so they can just come to campus and pick it up. It's a lot harder to try to figure out a process of mailing that. So we have a vendor that could do it, but again, I'm trying to have the staff focus on the most important part, which is the video, the diploma covers, the tassel, and the program. Because we want to make sure that when it, when a video drops at twelve, they get that full experience.
Right, right, okay.
Nice, very nice.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Curry. Moving on to fifteen point zero three, institutional set goals through twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
So I want to, uh I'm gonna have Lauren talk about this. I think this is important, it was going to be a discussion, I I have a question on them. Get updated our institutional set goals to provide updated data. And as a part of accreditation standard four point three, regards to board's involvement in uh the institutional set goals. I think it's very important that we document this process. The board has a big clear understanding. So Lauren?
Hi, good evening. Um as Dr. Curry mentioned, um this is an update of our um institutional set goals that the college has set some time ago. Um so these will look familiar to you. These are the high level metrics that we've developed to determine, are we, are we doing our job? Are are we meeting our mission? Um and it, there's a number of different metrics, um starting with successful enrollment at the beginning, um all the way down to the number of completions of degrees that we are conferring to students each year. Uh we usually update this on an annual basis, and um this most recent iteration includes two thousand eighteen nineteen um with the available data that that we could get. Um we had to um calculate much of these data points internally um because for some reason, some of the state um data systems that we usually get um these metrics from haven't been updated um in a timely way. Um and it was, it's been further complicated um by um internal data challenges that were, you know, we have with our transition away from El Camino. Um but we are doing our very best and provided as many of the metrics that we could. Um at the time, we'll update others as they become available. Um but this is an important document for us to be, to continue to have conversations with all of our stakeholders around um how well our students are doing um from, again, from when they enter the college. Are they getting through some of those key gatekeeper courses um that you guys talked about and heard from Dr. Cooper earlier around AB seven oh five with the completion of transfer level English in the first year and completion of transfer level math in the first year? Um and we still see that particularly transfer level math is a real challenge and barrier for our students to completion. Um some of the other um metrics that I think are really um relevant at this time um uh is around our success rate. We've disaggregated our success rate to include um looking at in-person course success rate compared to distance education course success rate. Now in the era of COVID nineteen, as we're transitioning to online learning, um I think it's important to show that we have been improving on our success rate for distance education over these last three data points. It's a really exciting increase that we see to the sixty six percent in the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Almost meeting our our twenty twenty one, twenty twenty Almost meeting our, our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two goal. Um, but we still do see a gap between our distance education sort course success rate and our in-person course success rate of seventy percent. So encouraging, um, information here, um, that is still just, you know, we know that we still have more work to do. Um, so again, there, there's, there's a number of, of metrics here, um, that you can, um, feel free, we can talk through, um, but we, we just provided the update with an additional data point if it was available. Um, we have not updated any of the twenty-one, twenty-two target goals. Um, we have talked about them with stakeholders. Um, we had a planning summit at the end of April, um, where we talked through some of these, um, and all of them still seemed relevant, um, as we're moving forward.
Curry, uh, board of trustees, uh, Dr. Little, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have questions.
Thank you, trustee Lee. Uh, trustee Ramos, do you have any, uh, oh, there you go, Dr. Little, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Uh, trustee Ramos? Trustee Cahoon?
No questions.
And Dr. LeBlanc?
No questions.
All right, thank you so much, Lauren, for that. Uh, moving on to fifteen point zero four, the twenty twenty one Compton Community College District tentative budget. Dr. Curry?
Close to no bit of time talking about the budget with, or give the update. Through your packet, I included information, uh, from the, um, other regards to May revise. And then also I included the, uh, joint analysis completed by the, uh, American, the Association of Community College Administrators, the Chief Business Officer, Chief Business Officer Association. And then also the, uh, Chancellor's Office, uh, regards to the budget for, uh, this year. And so I wanted to, uh, provide some updates for you of what we're looking at for Compton regards to the budget and some, uh, just some more information for you. As I told the staff today at the TARA talks, we're just now, we're just trying to understand where we're at in the budget. So the budget includes no cost of living adjustment for twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one. We're looking at about a ten percent reduction of our budget, uh, which is about four point two million dollars for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. Of some areas that's of concern is our, uh, fifty-five percent reduction in our strong workforce program, uh, which is, uh, our budget for this year was four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And we're looking at probably a budget cut of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand for that budget. Also, our education budget was reduced, uh, by forty-nine thousand dollars, uh, from, which is twelve point zero, twelve point one zero five. We, we're budgeting for four hundred and twelve thousand dollars for next year. We're actually gonna have a reduction of about forty-nine thousand dollars uh, from a four hundred and twelve thousand dollar budget. And then also including the budget was the, uh, Compton College Physical Education Complex. Also, uh, the funding formula, it was included in the budget, uh, and it's made, it's permanent, uh, with the seventy percent for enrollment, twenty percent for supplemental, and ten percent for, uh, success of students. One of these I would, would've mentioned that, um, they kept all the colleges, uh, on their, um, hold harness through twenty, their, everyone's hold harness through twenty twenty-two, and Compton was held, held harness through twenty twenty-four. However, in trailer bill language that I, I pulled from the Department of Finance, and the, the board knows that we've been advocating for additional years of our protection, so currently in the trailer bill language, it goes to twenty twenty-six. So we'll be funding at the fifty-nine eighty FTS permanently through twenty twenty-six, but we still will be advocating to get that extension through twenty twenty-eight. Twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, but just knowing that we have the extension through twenty twenty-six, uh, makes me feel a lot better about where we're at, where are the budget. Does even know our funding's stable. However, we're taking reduction of ten percent based off of the fifty-nine eighty number, which is still four million dollars. My major concern is that this is a long term, uh, over the next couple of years, regards to reductions. So we have to be very, uh, strategic regards to how much we'll use of our any balance versus how much we're gonna use of how much reduction we'll be making. So the staff is working on the budget now, we're revising our, our budget assumptions based off the information that we have. We're, uh, basically collecting, we've been collecting data from the different departments regardless of their budgets, before we start looking at potential budget reductions. And so we'll be meeting with the Fed and Budget Committee next week to talk about potential budget reductions. And then also, um, looking at, uh, the categorical programs as well. The main piece for me as we move forward and some of our guidelines for the budget is to maintain, uh, to the best of our ability, our current staffing level. So most people are asking, are we gonna be able to hire more staff in certain areas? We need to hire certain areas such as distance education. However, we need to be very strategic regards to additional staff. Can we pay for those staff long-term? And then also too, we have to be a lean, a lean organization and flexible as we move forward, because these budget cuts could last for the next three years. So the board has, uh, today, we provided more information on the budget than we received last week. I'm glad, I'm gonna have a better understanding of where we're at, and over the next weekend half, we have more information. But our goal is to bring forward to the board a revised budget for a, 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 a budget at the June, uh, fifteenth meeting. That concludes my report.
Board members, do you have any discussion, Dr. Little?
No questions, just, um, later, we can make sure that our nursing program staffing is at the level it needs to be to move forward. That's it, thank you.
All right, trustee Ramos?
No questions.
Uh, trustee Cahoon?
No.
And Dr. LeBlanc?
Uh, no, no questions, just, um, echoing what Dr. Little was saying about the nursing. Um, this would also be a good time to see if there are any additional funds or grants that may be coming out in state as a result of COVID nineteen, uh, to enhance our nursing programs. That would be wonderful.
Uh, trustee Lee, do you have any, um, questions?
No questions.
All right. Uh, moving on to fifteen point zero five, Human Resources Compton College Faculty Administrator Hiring Process Report Action Plan, Dr. Curry?
The Center for Urban Education and Dr. Someone, this is both came out, no present speaking about the, um, faculty and official hiring procedures and regulations. Um, trustee Cahoon gave me a, a question yesterday that I'm gonna be working through with that. But the last meeting I talked about, we're gonna develop an action plan. So, uh, Tina Cooperman, who is our Director of Title Nine Diversity and Title Nine and Compliance, she's been working on the, uh, on our, our action plan. And so I wanna share with the board, this is our action plan that we have, which also includes timelines for implementing the recommendations from the Center for Urban Education. If there's any question or recommendation for the board, please let me know.
Uh, Dr. Little, any discussion or recommendations?
I'm sorry, no.
All right, uh, trustee Ramos?
No.
Trustee Cahoon?
Dr. Curry, did I hear you say you're gonna, uh, answer my questions later because there was a lot of them, huh? You're muted or something.
There are thirty-six questions trustee Cahoon provided to me yesterday, and so I'm gonna be working through those the next couple of days with Tina Cooperman, so we'll be able to answer all those questions.
Okay, that, I just wanna, I thought this is what I heard you say, I just wanna make sure. Thank you.
Dr. LeBlanc?
And I just wanted to make sure, uh, trustee Cahoon, thirty-six questions?
It, it was a thick packet.
We're gonna have to get you more stuff to do during this shelter in place. Well, I ha- I have no questions.
Uh, trustee Lee, do you have any questions? Or discussion? I didn't hear trustee Lee.
No, I don't.
All right, thank you. Um, moving on to item number sixteen, um, there's no grant items to report. Moving on to item number seventeen, Board Policies and Administrative Regulations. Um, these are policies for us to take a look at if there's any policy, um, from a board member that is, uh, you would like to discuss or take a look at, um, I will call each one, let me know. If not, we're just gonna skip, kind of peruse through this one. And Dr. Little, any board policies?
No, I think we've discussed them. If I do, I'll send them at a later time.
All right, uh, trustee Ramos?
Nope.
Trustee Cahoon?
No.
Uh, Dr. LeBlanc?
I know, but I would like to, to recommend that we adopt them in totality.
Oh, we're not individually going through them, I'm just, we're, we're just gonna pull out directions, yep. Um, trustee Lee?
No, not, not all.
All right, um, moving on to item number eighteen.
Can I make a comment regards to the board policies?
You sure can. Forgot to call on you.
Okay, so just for, just so everyone understands, we're moving forward, uh, we have a ton of policies we're getting through based off our chart. But I just wanna highlight, uh, two administrative regulations, just so everyone knows what we did since the last board meeting. And the administrative regulations have to do with the, um, a board policy, administrative regulation, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-five, and twenty-seven, thirty. Uh, the board, the last meeting talked about health benefits, and so what we did was we revised the board, uh, we requested board approval on the board member compensation, and then we also include a new board po- administrative regulation regards to board members' compensation, and then also about board members' health benefits. And that was as the direction from the last board meeting. And that concludes my update on that one. Oh, also, uh, administrative regulation seventeen thirty-one, which was the trustee Cahoon asked about, which was the, the procedure for reporting child abuse and, and never really hit reporting, we added administrative regulation to that. And that was a recommendation from that. So I wanna make sure the board knows this.
No.
Well, will that still address, um, what was raised earlier, Dr. Curry, about the changes like in Title Nine? And, and whether or not that'll be impacted, the child abuse?
Uh, I can ask, so Tina Cooperman worked on this last week, so I need to ask that question, like, ask that question as a follow-up.
And the showering for the homeless, you clarified that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number eighteen, these are usually your updates on information, are you going individually, is, is a total of twenty-eight items?
Okay, so basically, these are basically updates, this adds some follow-ups, I think so there's a couple important items. The, the first one is item eighteen point zero seven, which is the collaborative governance document. So the board, we've been working with our constituent groups to create, uh, a collaborative governance document for our institution. That document, uh, we, it took us about a year to get this done, which is a, which is a good thing. And so this is the first reading regards to how decisions are made at Compton College. And I think, I think it's very well written, I do wanna say thank to the Adam and the Senate, uh, the bargaining units, and also students and administrators who worked on that over the last year. The next item is item eighteen point zero eight, which is our enrollment management plan. Uh, the staff is working on this led by Elizabeth Martinez, uh, so we're, we're excited about the, uh, the draft, this first reading. The Adam and the Senate has already had a first reading, and they're moving for approval at their meeting this, this week. Item eighteen point zero nine, I just provide that to you so you know all the guidance we're receiving from the Chancellor's Office regards to COVID nineteen. This is the second month that we have done this, I will continue to do this every month. Just so you get a sense of the direction that the Chancellor's Office is providing to us as we move. I'm just gonna mute trustee Lee. Um, uh, the other update I wanna talk about is the nursing program, so you get an update of where we're at with our nursing program. I did meet with the BRN on May fifth, and so it was a very good meeting, uh, the whole issues regards to the, um, the clinicals, yes, our students are participating in clinicals, uh, we have some faculty members, uh, who are participating through clinical through Zoom. Uh, but due to their age, they're not allowed to, uh, work in the hospital, but we have part-time faculty members who are going to clinicals. I followed back up with the BRN on that issue as well, and the BRN is also recommending our students participate in clinicals as a part of their requirement. Um, the next item I wanted to highlight is item number eighteen point one eight, which is our Persus Stirs funding schedule. I mentioned before to the board, regards to stock market and money that we have in Persus Stirs. Uh, the market actually rebound as of today, so we're, we're over eight million dollars again. Oh, I'm sorry, is that the right one?
No.
I'm sorry, Lauren, eighteen point two zero. And that's the Persus Stirs, uh, are, so what, what we've been doing is we've been monitoring every day where we're at, so today we get, we're over eight million dollars today. So can you, can you zoom in on that, Lauren? So as of today, which I got this at ten o'clock this morning, the market rebounded, it's, it's at eight, we're at eight million, eight point zero one three on the market, so it had a big rebound. So if you look at last week, we're at seven point seven. Now we, we picked up a close to almost three hundred thousand dollars over the last couple of days. And so I monitor that very closely because this is our OPEB dollars and also our Persus Stirs fund.
Uh, trustee Cahoon has a question regarding that, um, last item that you just discussed.
No, the item before about the clinical, uh, I didn't read, the clinical, remember that email that the, all of us received? So you figured out a way for them to do their clinicals?
Yeah, the students are doing clinicals, and the, the issue with the clinicals is that they have to do fifty percent. They have to, the, BRN used to require seventy-five percent for clinicals, now it's fifty percent. And so some of the clinicals faculty are doing is through Zoom, but then also students are going to the hospital as well. And the students are going to same hospital that El Camino is now trying to use that hospital as well, but students are spending time in the clinicals.
Okay, so they were satisfied, you were able to satisfy all their concerns from the email that they sent all of us?
I don't know, we were able to satisfy all the concerns, but we've been able to work with the faculty and also the students as we move forward. And so our Director of Nursing has been following up with the students, and I met with the faculty two weeks ago, regards to the issue. Have a follow-up email to faculty that's going out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and that concludes my updates from this section.
All right, moving on to item.
Um, I just had just a quick question on accreditation, that we are on track for that, and all of the people are supplying their reports. And then you have board reports scheduled, and distance education is not on there for the next few months, and I'm wondering if we can add that just as a regular update, as long as we're remaining online.
So last month we provided, so let me ask first question. First question, I do have a draft of our midterm report, I haven't had a chance to look at it the last week and half. But that's something I'll be working on the next couple of weeks, but we will have our, our report is due to the commission by March fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. I'm not concerned, I just gotta, we gotta spend some time looking at the draft. The second part of it, we provided a report for distance education last month, um, and also provided an update in my newsletter last week. I have no problem providing an update on distance education, I would prefer that we do it maybe every other month rather than every month.
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting, just maybe every other month or every three months, just as, as a regular, thank you.
All right, moving on to item number nineteen, future agenda items. Um, Dr. Curry, will you, um, quickly just go over some of these?
Yeah, so just so you know, it's future items, we have some recognition next month for the, uh, distinguished faculty recipient, the outstanding adjunct, and also to senior staff recipient. We're also gonna recognize, we have a new award that we came up with based off of stability, so we have these stability champion awards that we came up with, and we gotta recognize those individuals as well, and we do that next month also. We're working on our fact book, trustee Cahoon had a question regards to nineteen point zero five and a fact book. And she was asking, what's taking so long with Banner? It's not a banner problem, as I mentioned to this is an issue with the National Clearhouse, uh, regards to, uh, getting approval for them regards to our students and our enrollment. So we finally got that approval, now Lauren Sosink will be working with National Clearhouse regards to next step. And then once we have that, we can be able to have our transfer data that's verified where the students have transferred to. Nineteen point zero six, we're looking at doing a Zoom meeting for the bond oversight committee, so Lauren is working, not Lauren, but, uh, Paulo's working on following up, I followed up with our committee members to set up a Zoom meeting for that next month. So Lauren is working, not Lauren, but, uh, Paul, Paul is working on following up, with, up, I followed up with our committee members to set up a Zoom meeting for that next month. You also have update on AB seven oh five regards to activities that we're implementing. I know you might think that we're bringing AB seven oh five back a lot, but if you look at our goals for two thousand nineteen, twenty, AB seven oh five was a big goal for the college. And so we want to make sure that we keep the board updated of what we're doing for AB seven oh five and also research. We also have to the budget for recommended, uh, to be reviewed and approved, but also update on Compton College strong one program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for going over number nineteen. Moving on to number twenty, oral reports. By all means, Dr. Curry, please kick us off.
Uh, one, I do want to say thank you to the board of trustees for approving the, uh, the hiring of Sherry Berger as the vice president of academic affairs for Compton College. He is currently the vice president of academic affairs at, unless that is Pierce College. She would begin her employment at Compton College on June fifteenth, um, and I send the information to the board regards to the hire. Also, I want to say thank you to the staff. Uh, my internet's been acting up a little bit today at my house, and I thought it was, uh, because of my first Zoom meeting, but I had over, we had over two hundred and six people participate in our Twitter talks, uh, this afternoon. That probably went very well, and I sent out to the board to copy that presentation. Uh, but it was, it was a well-attended meeting. I'm glad I called it. I, my last time I talked was scheduled to end, was scheduled in April. But I added another one for May because I want to make sure the campus became everybody updated. And so, uh, it went very well, and I want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in sending it up to the college. It's another way for us to maintain our employees. The other update, I want to say thank you to the board in regards to the approval of job descriptions. We're, we're dependent on the organization for this education program regards to hiring a distance education manager and also a, um, uh, also a, a structural designer to help our faculty regards to structural design. One thing that, that I would mention, uh, I was told the other day about at the board of governors meeting, we've been in contacts with the, uh, Calbright regards to, uh, our campus being utilized as a part of our distance education program, but also our lab to be utilized for online education for community members who are taking, uh, courses through Calbright who are from our community, but also creating pathways for students who are at Calbright who end up coming to Compton College and complete one of our programs. And so, uh, we're gonna be working on a contract, uh, regards to, uh, that partnership where they'll be providing us with some revenue as we move forward. The Calbright mentioned it at the board of governors meeting yesterday, so I felt it was very important that I mentioned it today. This is something that we're working on. Hopefully the next couple of weeks, we can be able to have a contract solidified with that organization. This will help us as we move forward regards to renovating of our lab for deep distance education, also providing support for our distance education manager. I, I know people have some certain issues regards to, um, Calbright. I think it's very important that we create partnerships with all organizations that affects students and student success. And I think working with Calbright is a good idea for the college and also a good idea for our community because they're providing some programs for our community that we're, we're not able to offer, uh, online. But then we can also look at creating pathways for the students to our campus. And I feel that this is gonna be a model for the hundred fifteenth college as they move forward. And so I'm excited about that partnership. But the next thing I, I do want to, uh, mention is that we're putting together a task force. That's gonna make sure everyone's aware of what we're trying to do, is we're, we're looking at, we're, uh, revamping our first year experience program to be across guided pathways, divisions. And so we put together a task force that have come up with some recommendations through the fall, and then we can be able to implement those recommendations in fall of twenty twenty-one. And I think this is, this is a great, it's a perfect time because we're trying to break down, uh, with regards to our organization. We're breaking down every single silo that we have on campus that we're all on the same page as relates to Compton twenty twenty-four. And that same page looks at the completion by design, but making sure that we're providing the services across the campus. And it's very important as we move forward that we look at first year experience and how do we do that? So one of the things that was included in the board letter that's connected to the first year experience and the college promise program, that we're offering our first time, we're doing a summer bridge program. It's a virtual summer bridge program for our campus. I'm really excited about the work that Dr. Blonschrein and, uh, staff are doing regards to, um, to our virtual summer bridge program. And we, we're funding it, and we want to continue to provide that service to our students and be across the guided pathways, division, which will be a perfect lead into our first year experience program as we move forward. And the, the final piece that I, I do want to say is that I want to say thank you to all the faculty and staff for all their work that they have been doing for the last three months. As we go through this pandemic, some, some people can think about just the pandemic, or think about how we move forward with our organization. Um, if you look at what we have been able to do over the last three months, we have not become complacent regards to just look at the pandemic. We're continuing to talk about student success. We're continuing to push the agenda of what we need to get done. You look at this board agenda, we still have, we had our collaborative governance document. We have the EEO plan approved by the board. Uh, so we're, we're completely, we have the enrollment management plan. So the things that the board has wanted to see done, we're continuing to do that and we continue to do it at the same time with the, um, COVID nineteen. So I'm very impressed with the work that we're doing, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna continue to move this direction. But we're not just focused on COVID nineteen, we're actually focused on moving the institution forward. And, and I, I want the board to, to know that it's because of the faculty, staff, and administration who's doing all the, the heavy lifting. We've been able to accomplish a lot over the last, uh, three months. And that concludes my report.
Uh, student trustee, um, Lee, I know earlier you weren't able to, um, be on the call, but we also wanted to, um, recognize you as this is your last board meeting. Um, and earlier we would, uh, each board member was able to say a couple of words. Um, but first we'll let you give your presentation, but know that we didn't forget about your recognition.
It's been an honor from, from my professor. It, it's been a huge honor of serving as, as the Dr. Curry student trustee and the board. I've been so, it's been experience I ever had to be on a board. And it's like, it's like my first, like, it's like a job, it's like a dream come true, traveling and going to meetings and meetings after meetings after meetings. But with you, with, with y'all and, uh, student life of ASB, at first I was scared. I was scared. Nerve-wracking, nervous. At first, I don't know, I don't know what to say to people, like, I literally got stuck until I talked to Chris or Andre. What should I say? What should I do? What should I say to the board? What you want to do to say to the board or like, nervous? Yeah, I got, I got through it. As a student trust, I got through it to the end. Hallelujah. It been, it been a, it been a pleasure traveling with you. It been a pleasure traveling with y'all. It's my first, my first experience traveling alone, many years at the motel. Like, I got nervous on the plane, like, really, really nervous because it was my first time traveling by myself to meet y'all to the destination y'all sent me, yeah, determined to go to. That's my first experience I've ever, ever, ever had to ride on, travel on a plane by myself. It been so excited to see different people, different things that go, go, goes, goes on, goes on to, on meetings and stuff, like, different people saying what they do for their college. It been helpful. I hope I could do it again because next year, I plan to graduate next year because I'm going slow. I mean, I don't want to go fast. Fast is way, nothing gets, nothing you get, nothing you get done. It powers up. So next year, no, this year, I'm not, not, I'm not a legend this year. We got a plan to go slow and consider next year. But will, I will support my students. I will be at the graduation, say, say a few words. And, um, besides of me being on a board as student trustee, I spoke with, uh, a one of ASB member, when we, when we say something to y'all, so like, one of the problems that we have with going to class, going to get stuff done as a student, as myself, it been, been hard for us to, especially for the, especially for resource students, it been so hard. Teacher, teachers going fast. It's not, it's not going to, I'm not, not going to like, in the middle, like, must be to reach, to go into, like, the actual stuff we, we need to learn, but people's rushing, but like teachers don't, teachers and instructors don't like, explain more, but they, they should explain more to us because we, we get, we get party, but it's facing party, everything. So explain more what's going on in the class, what's going on more in, in the lectures and like, furthermore, everything on the test. It's like, for me, it's like a little hard for me, but I'm getting it. I'm getting it done. I'm going slow. So it's been excitement for me to pass in my class where I am now. And next year I graduate. So it been pleasant to be a student at Compton College. Compton College is my family. I made it on whatever it be, where I be, without support of people telling me, don't quit. Don't, don't give up. Try. It's not, don't, don't give up the first time. You have, so soon I got to Compton College. I wanted to quit, but they said, don't quit. Keep on going, keep, 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 keep pushing. I would get through it, and there's right. It was so fun. And then next year about to graduate, I'd be so glad. Then I hope I could do this to trust you again for next, next year before I graduate. We, I want to do it again. Because Compton College is my family. So thank you, Dr. Curry, for giving the courage and everybody telling me to go, especially Debra Calhoun, slowed, tell me to slow down and say what you want to say so they can hear you. That support, that, that support, that support me to do my best and talk slower so people understand me what I'm saying on my mouth. So thanks for, Debra, Debra Calhoun, thank you very much for telling me that and God bless, God bless you, God bless you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's my, that's my report.
That's all right.
We're gonna go over to our, uh, twenty point zero three board of trustees report. We'll start off with Dr. Little.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate our thanks and congratulations to trustee Lee and, um, really appreciated having him serve as student representative and trustee Lee. We learned quite a bit from you as well. Your fortitude, your professionalism, your insight, and most importantly, your voice, um, was very valued here, um, at the board and at the statewide level and, um, across many other entities. You represented us well. Thank you. Um, no full report on June the third. Um, trustee Calhoun and myself will co-host a community Zoom virtual event. And, and we just will be updating and will provide additional information once the flyer is done. I just want to thank especially the staff and administration and the faculty for all the great work they've done in this transition. Thank you.
All right, uh, trustee Ramos?
I just wanted to congratulate, um, student trustee Lee on a job well done. I, I mean, it's not easy being a student and then doing all this extracurricular stuff on top of that. And, and not just that, just showing courage like here on the board and at the conferences, speaking your truth, so keep on doing that. And as for my report, the, the only comment I had was, um, reviewing, uh, this month's board letter. At, um, in the beginning part of it, there's, uh, numbers, there's stats on the Compton College Oliver Connor Promise Program. And I had a concern, like, maybe at a future board meeting, hopefully at the next one, if you, if Dr. Curry could provide more information, looking at the numbers, my assumption was that Compton Unified, it, out of the three school districts that we serve, Compton Unified is the largest one. Yet Compton Unified has the smallest number of applicants, and I just wanted to know why. And that's the case. I think that number should be much higher. And that's all I had.
All right, moving over to trustee Calhoun.
Oh, Willie Lee, Willie Lee, Willie Lee, you will be missed by me. Uh, I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to and, and be with you. And I loved it, Willie, when we went to the convention and you stood up there by the mic and you did it not one time, but you did it two times and, and everybody was behind you. And you remember how I said, I yelled and I say, take your time. You could do it. Take your time. And everybody else timed in, so.
Because I know, I, I know, I've, I've been recorded. I didn't know that.
It was my pleasure. And trust me, I learned from you also, especially about that laptop, when you were trying to show me some stuff about the laptop. So I had a good laugh about that. And, uh, so you will truly be missed by all of us. But especially by me, you know, being at the same hotel, eating together, going around the corner to, uh, what was that, CVS? Yeah, we went around the corner to CVS. We thought it was really far, so you brought a lot of joy, uh, to the board as a board trustee, and you asked good questions, excellent questions, how you represented the students. So you truly will be missed. As far as my report, I forgot what I was gonna say.
My lord.
Yeah, so let's move on.
Dr. LeBlanc?
I would like to say thank you, thank you, thank you to, uh, trustee Lee. Uh, it was a pleasure serving with you, and, um, I want to congratulate you on making it through your tenure as a student trustee. Uh, we were certainly all enriched by your presence and by you being a part of our board. Um, so the best is yet to come to you. I'd like to say to Dr. Curry, thank you for the leadership that you have provided through this pandemic um, episode, and, um, thank you to your staff and faculty as they are moving through to get this first group of students on to, uh, the end of the academic year. And so this is just, uh, um, another way of students being able to learn. Um, we teach them in class to, to be prepared for, uh, unexpected, um, circumstances. But we never think that it'd be something that will be global. And that's the air that we're living in. This is just the beginning of, of changes. And our students will have to be able to adapt, and we certainly will have to have faculty and staff that can adapt as well. And those that cannot adapt will have to be left behind and replaced with those who can. Because it, the most important thing is being, having our students ready and being able to be valuable, uh, citizens in this global society. And so we have to provide them with all the skills that are needed to make sure that they move forward. Uh, so that's all I have to say is be safe, everybody, and, uh, keep on moving forward.
All right, um, thank you trustee Lee for your service to our board. Um, our student trustee is an advocate and an extension of our student body. And so you have been the voice of our, um, student population and really letting us know what, um, their concerns have been. And so thank you so much for, for the work that you have put in this past year. And I'm glad that you, um, can go on to talk about the good experience that you were able to obtain as a result of, you know, attending the conferences, being able to speak before, um, an audience, you know, with your peers in Sacramento or in DC and listening to what they too are going through and bringing that back to, to our campus. Um, I don't have any other further report. Um, I know this is an upcoming long weekend, so everybody have a, a good memorial. Um, stay safe and continue to practice social distancing. Um, our next regular scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, June sixteen, twenty twenty. Closed session begins at four. Open session begins at five. Um, today we will adjourn in honor of, uh, Dr. Little's Uncle John Celestine Senior and Floyd Ruffin Senior. Um, it is eight twenty-nine, and I call this meeting to order.
Uh, trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Can we also uh, adjourn in memory of those lost people, people who have lost uh, who have died during COVID nineteen? And remembering our veterans as we go into Memorial Day.
All right, and also remembering those lost their lives and as a result of this pandemic and our veterans. And um, to Andy, who is one of our very own veteran, I.
That's right.
Be a little hand up.
Uh, uh, could we close also in the remember, memory of a Mr. Zare, Clarence Zarita? Uh, he passed away. He's the father of former council uh, person. Uh, Jana and Satcha Zarita, and also the husband of former councilwoman. Zarita. And I wasn't sure if Gene wanted to say something about uh, Willie Lee. Because it looked like he was getting ready to say.
He was given to say something. Come on out, Mr. Farrell.
Give me a, I don't think so. His hand. Uh, but Dr. Mr. Farrell, do you have anything to say?
Well, I just want to congratulate him. I I thought he was absolutely marvelous.
Yeah.
And good luck. You did a beautiful job, and I hope we see you next year.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Lopez.
No problem. And so we'll add those names, um, Clarence Zarita, COVID nineteen victims, our veterans, and our two um, members that I mentioned earlier. Thank you so much. It is eight thirty-one, and this meeting is adjourned.
Hey, Sonia, can you call me?
Okay.
Thank you.
You guys have a great night.
Hey, good night, all.
All have a safe week.
Yeah.